All right, this quarter, regularly scheduled meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, December 7th, 2020. Could you please call a roll?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Flaherty?
Yeah.
Flowers? Brady?
President.
Houseman?
Here.
Rand? Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Here. Councilor Houseman, did you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the class of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am unmuted, so thank you, everybody. Like I mentioned earlier, we do have a really big agenda tonight, so let's just jump right into it after I read the remote script. Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Monday, December 7th, 2020. Confirming member access as a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I'm confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Nod of the head would be great. Thank you, everyone. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings at a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does have public participation during our three public hearings. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept at their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed in subcommittee, actually notified, and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration, thereof, and a vote thereon. However, if the council may by majority vote order any matter pending with a subcommittee to be acted upon in the subcommittee at its next meeting in order to be with forth returned to the full council. For those of you who haven't been there before, rather than break for committee work, we vote on our motions and orders and what's before us as the full council by a roll call vote, as long as a majority of the council agrees to it. So I'll ask Ms. Kent to take that roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman? Rand? Rotundo?
Yes.
Houseman, yes.
Guanci?
Yes. A few things, meeting ground rules for public hearings. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll invite the council to provide any comment, questions, or motions. After the council has made their comments and asked their questions, I'll ask members of the public if they would like to speak also. If you would like to speak, just please type your name in the chat. Other than the public hearings, the chat is reserved for members of the city council and members of the mayor's staff. So that's where we're at. Thank you. Deputy Chief, Peter O'Connor. Is Mayor Cahill here? Would he like to introduce you? I see his name somewhere, don't I?
Hi, Mr. President. Sure, I don't want to speak for deputy, I will say that, as you know, we undertook a search to the Chief Carter, whose retirement becomes official coming Thursday. Thursday, I think it's Friday, actually, but we conducted an assessment center. There was a first round of cutting down a good, a strong number of candidates to nine or 10 interviews, and then we selected five finalists to go through the assessment center. Deputy O'Connor rose to the top, which I think is a testament to his professionalism and all the work he's done here in this community and on behalf of our community, which really has prepared him. And I'll tell you, what I learned during this process is just how deeply respected and how widely respected he is, both within the community, throughout many city departments and throughout the community at large, and then really across the region, for some of the work he has done at the State Fire Academy and a number of settings. Really, you don't always have the right person in house, but when you do, it's important to recognize that. He really performed incredibly well during this process, but it was really, that was just underscoring and reinforcing who he is and what he has brought to the job for the over 20 years, I think it's 23, deputy can give you the exact number of years that he's been serving the city and serving the people of the city. So we're excited at City Hall. I know that the team of department heads who know him well and have worked with him for years are very excited to work with him in this new capacity. I would give up, I'd be remiss to not give some credit to Chief Carter for both being a great leader in our community and in the fire department, but also for having spent a good deal of time mentoring Deputy O'Connor and helping prepare him for this opportunity. And I would say it's a strong department with a lot of very talented, committed fire professionals, and I'm confident that both they'll respond positively to Deputy O'Connor as the new chief, you know, should you folks take that action tonight, and that he will be a true leader, which he has been for years, but he'll be a leader in a new role, both in the community and across the state and beyond, I'm sure. So thank you for giving me a chance to introduce him, and I humbly and respectfully ask your support for deputy when you do take that vote this evening, I hope. Thank you. Deputy?
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Deputy Chief, Peter O'Connor.
Hello. I just want to say thank you very much. Obviously, I'm blessed to work for the Department of Work and the organization, the City of Beverly. I thank you very much, Mayor, for the kind words. Simple thing is, Chiefs Carter and Pierce have laid a great foundation. They've put me in a tremendous position, and I owe a lot to them. I know you have a lot of stuff to do tonight, so I'll kind of keep it brief, but I really do appreciate your consideration, and I do look forward to working with all of you as we move forward. Like the mayor said, we do have a great department. There's a lot of really good firefighters, and I'm looking forward to working with all of them, and I thank you. I thank for all the support I've had so far. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Deputy Chief O'Connor, Councilor Flaherty.
Yes, I just want to say a few brief words. I mean, I commend the mayor for recognizing what he has done in his professional career in rural Beverly. The mayor's right. Sometimes you don't always have the person in house, but when you do have somebody, want to recognize that. It also helps the whole department, knowing that if they are a fireman, they can rise up to be chief. I think that helps, you know, long term. But again, I commend the mayor for doing that and recognizing that, but also, to me, it was a pretty good, excellent choice. The new chief is going to do an excellent job and build on the foundation and help that department and the whole city, so congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Anybody else? You might get off easy, but I'll just say that Deputy Chief O'Connor, it's been a pleasure watching you rise through the ranks. I know you started when Chief Ken Palanzo was the chief, and then you went on to Chief Pierce, and then Chief Carter, and I think hopefully after we take our vote in committee, you will be the fourth fire chief that I've had the pleasure to work with. It's always been nice to have a great relationship with you guys. It's nice that we started a few years ago, bringing your new hires and your promotions into City Hall. Hopefully, you'll continue to do that once we're able to meet live and in person again. But we really appreciate everything you've done for the city and what you're going to continue to do. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have a public hearing scheduled for 7:15 on Order Number 243. Ms. Kent, would you please read that order?
Order Number 243, petition National Grid Plan and Verizon petition to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining fixtures along and across countyway.
And Michael Byrne from National Grid is here somewhere. Mr. Byrne?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can, loud and clear.
Okay, as I'm sure you're aware, MassDOT is reconfiguring the intersection at Cabot and Dodge Street. Due to a relocation of one of our poles, we need a support across the street to hold the pole up, so we're petitioning for a new guy stub location across from Pole 2804, which is across from Henry's Market parking lot.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Any questions or comments from members of the city council? Feldman, our Ward 5 councillor, that's in your ward, just barely, but it is. I'm muted. There you go.
Okay. My question is, the work is just happening above ground, then? It's just a reinforcement pole?
Because of a lane reconfiguration. I believe they're adding an extra lane. I'm sorry about this backfeed. I don't know what is causing it. Because of the lane reconfiguration, we have to move the pole closer to the Henry's parking lot, and the angle it's creating causes us to need a support fixture across the street.
Okay, so it is above ground. It's worked.
It's all above ground.
Okay. And my other question is, is there Verizon equipment currently on the pole as well?
I believe it is.
Okay, because Verizon is listed on this as well, and I was just curious. Okay.
I'd say that Verizon and National Grid are probably on about 99% of the poles together.
Okay. We've had considerable issues with Verizon in North Beverly, and so that, I was curious for a couple of reasons, so that might answer something with the construction going on, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Houseman.
Yes, Mr. Byrne. Will this create a double pole situation, or is this a new freestanding pole?
The one being petitioned for is a new freestanding pole.
Okay, thank you.
That's good. We do not like double poles here in the City of Beverly. Any members of the public wish to make a comment on this one? Hearing, no further questions or comments. I will close our public hearing, and then I will ask Ms. Kent to take a roll call vote to approve the petition. Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand? Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes. Let's move on to our next public hearing on Order Number 240. Ms. Kent, could you please read that order?
Order Number 240, communication from the CPC recommending funding for the Group A mural project as proposed by the Beverly Public School Department.
Mayor Cahill, I'm looking for somebody to address this public hearing. I don't see Brian Ailes or, I see Emily Hutchins. I thought I saw Darlene Mann.
So I can lead and see if anybody else wants to follow up.
You're all silent. Great.
So as you all know, we several years ago made a decision together to save the Group A mural, which was along the wall at the McDonald's. Over time, we determined that the best place for it, actually found a home for it at the library. We had $25,000 set aside to cover the cost of removal, restoration, and return, and we were looking to work with a company out of Williamstown, Massachusetts. So we transported it. We were able to get it safely down from the wall at McDonald's, but it does need restoration work. And we took it out to Williamstown, and then some kind of back and forth with them. They gave us a quota of about $47,000 to do all the work. So we were trying to figure out, you know, where best to find the additional resources needed, and I will turn it, I think I'm going to turn it to Ms. Barrett in a minute, because I think, I could be wrong, but I think she's the one. She and Commissioner Collins spoke in front of the Community Preservation Committee as they applied on our behalf to do this. So I do see, I'm not sure I see Commissioner Collins, but I do see Ms. Barrett. She's unmuted. So I'm going to let her kind of give you the rest of the story. How's that?
That's great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council President Guanci. I just wanted to say a few words about this project. Actually, Emily Hutchins and Mike Collins and myself were the team on this grant, and the costs were significantly above the funding that we did have in place, and so we needed to move very quickly. The preservation place in Williamstown was going to start charging rent as of November for the mural, and so it was going to be $1,000 a month, and we had to submit an out-of-cycle application to the CPC because we wouldn't have been getting grant notification from them until June. And so to avoid paying $7,000 in rental fees, we thought that we'd like to save the city those tax dollars, and we were successful, but I'm going to defer to Emily Hutchins, because she really was instrumental in helping pull this grant together in 24 hours. I think I said at the last meeting I had never done a grant in 24 hours, but I'll say between Emily and Commissioner Collins and myself, we did it. It was a little stressful, but we got it done. And so we would respectfully ask for your approval on this CPC out-of-cycle grant. So Emily?
Thank you, Catherine. Hello, councilors. Thank you so much for hearing this today. So yeah, the Group A mural, Mayor Cahill gave you an overview, and Catherine, of how it came to be in Williamstown and how we came to need the funds. I actually found out about it because one of our Historic Commission members, Suzie Lamont, asked about it, and she and Ward 2 Civic Association had a question about where it was, and so I reached out to Mike, and we figured out exactly what was going on, and we were very fortunate to have really good timing in terms of getting a determination of historic significance before the Historic Commission, and then being able to pull the pre-application and then the application together. So the funding that is before you tonight is the entirety of the gap funding that's needed. We do have a significant donation that supplies approximately half of the funds required, but the other funding, the OB CPA funding, would finish that need. So I can take any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions? Hutchins? I know Councilor Rand would like to speak or make a comment. Councilor Rand? Stella, you around? Maybe you got knocked off. We'll go to Councilor Flaherty.
I just want to say this is a great use of the CPC funds, because this is what it was created for, to look at opportunities where there is a lack of funding. The idea of a private funder and bringing this money, tax money, is an important way of what we can do to save an important piece like this, so I commend the city, kind of, to everybody here coming together in such short time to do that. But that's what I believe the money is for, so good work on everybody's part.
And I know Derek Beckworth is here, and he is the Planning Board's rep to the CPC committee. Mr. Beckworth, do you want to share any of your deliberations on this?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. This was really interesting, because it went overnight from being a regular cycle to an out-of-cycle request, and everyone from the city was pulling together. We held a special meeting, public meeting, to deal solely with this. All the materials, the grant materials, planning materials, everything was spot on, so it made our decision very easy. We determined it was eligible. It met all the criteria for out-of-cycle, especially with the $7,000 or $8,000 savings, and then we really talked through the project. One of the things that really struck us was the exceptional work that Commissioner Collins and the whole team from the Department of Public Services did in saving the mural to begin with, and then being able to store it. It's actually the wall, you know, the board, blue board from the wall that's been removed. And we all shared stories about when we first saw it. I remember seeing it with my kids in the 80s, and they still remember it, you know, and so we went around the room that way. But then we really dug in, and they were really on target with the budget, and, you know, the fact that this is also is going to be hung in the Beverly Public Library, hopefully by October for all the public to be able to see. Hopefully, we're open, you know, at that point. It really sealed the deal, so we passed it unanimously. And it was very fun, and as Councilor Flaherty said, it really reminded us all why we love to be on the CPC, because it's exactly the type of fun, great, community project that we like to work on.
Thank you for sharing, Mr. Beckworth. Councilor Houseman?
Yeah, just briefly, I would second what Councilor Flaherty said. I just want to compliment the entire, you know, team on the city staff for their work, and appreciate the work of the volunteers on CPC for recognizing the significance of this, and in particular, you know, anytime when the city leveraged funds, as in this case, a donation, it's always a great aspect of how you can use grant funding to its best use, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Houseman. Anybody else? Do any members of the public wish to comment on this one? Okay, hearing, no further questions or comments. I'll close our public hearing, and then I will ask Ms. Kent for a roll call vote to approve.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand? Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes, and that passes eight to zero. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Let's move right on to our third and final public hearing of the evening on Order Number 241. Ms. Kent?
Order 241. We need to mute, I think.
Okay.
Everybody muted?
Everybody's muted.
Okay. Ready? Try it again. You want me to read this poll order, correct?
I do. After Councilor Rand mutes, I want you to read.
Okay. Order Number 241. Your Honorable City Council, in January 2020, the Beverly City Council voted unanimously to appoint an independent elected salary review committee with the charge to review and report back to the council any recommendations or findings regarding the salaries of the mayor, city council, and school committee before the end of the calendar year. The council appointed Alan Temkin as chair, William Howard, vice chair, and Rebecca Beckman, reporting secretary, to these three-person committee. The committee spent most of the past year deliberating and now have recommendations for this body to consider. The committee utilized a consultant from UMass Collins Center to assist them in their research. You should have previously received a copy of the report as prepared by the consultant. As of my understanding, the committee has unanimously supported these recommendations, which are incorporated in my letter to you. Specifically, the committee has recommended the following. Number one, that the annual salary of the mayor be raised to $135,000 effective January 1st, 2022. Number two, that the annual salary of the council president be $15,000, and that the annual salary of council members be $14,000, both effective January 1st, 2022. Third, that the annual salary of the school committee president be $7,500, and that the annual salary of a school committee member be $7,000 effective January 1st, 2022. And number four, finally, that a new city ordinance be established that the city council budget management analyst be required to report to the city council during the first year of two-year term for Beverly elected officials with information sufficient to allow the city council to consider salary adjustments for the aforementioned elected officials. Contained in this letter to you are recommendations modifications to city ordinances as recommended by the elected salary review committee. I respectfully request that a public hearing be established on December 7th, 2020, to further discuss these matters. And consultation with the city solicitor is my understanding that we are not required to hold a public hearing on these proposed ordinance recommendations. However, given the sensitivity of this subject matter, it is my recommendation and request that we hold a public matter, public hearing to allow for transparency discussion with everyone, including the taxpayers and citizens of the city. The elected salary review committee will make a formal presentation at that time, and the consultant will be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. I'm sorry, I talked over you, Ms. Kent.
That was orders, it all became order 241, 241A, and 241AB.
241B. I think we'll start with Budget Analyst, Mr. Jerry Perry, because I think this was his idea back then. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. If I could suggest, with your permission, I would go right to the chairperson of the elected salary review committee, Chairman Temkin. We did, at my recommendation, suggest that we do this analysis. As you know, you all voted this unanimously back in January at your inauguration, and my hope is to allow Chairman Temkin to give you about a five to seven-minute oral presentation, certainly take questions from whomever, and then, with your permission, I'd like to wrap it up if I could, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Temkin, good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and hello to the councilors, and thank you, Jerry. I'm Alan Temkin. I appear before you tonight in my capacity as chair of the Salary Review Committee. I am joined by committee members Bill Howard and Becky Beckman. And as you know, joining us tonight is Jerry Perry and Mary Flanders Icardi from the Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management, which is the consulting firm hired by the city to provide us the data that we requested and needed to consider and discuss, and which led us to the recommendations that we've made. I would also like to take a moment to thank Pauline Tixera, the city HR director, and Stephanie Williams, our city solicitor, for their input. Our committee is an independent group of local business professionals formed at the request of the city- request of the city council, and our mission was to research the salary history of the mayor's office, city council, school committee, and school committee, and then make recommendations. You have all received, and I trust have read the report we presented, and we are prepared tonight to answer your questions. Copy of this report are available from the city clerk's office to anyone who might want one. Just a few points that I wanted to highlight that we researched and how that data led us to the recommendations that we've made. As you know, the city hired the Collins Center and provided them with a list outlining the scope of services requested. Those services requested in abbreviated form include: research the history of salaries and other comp of the Beverly mayor's office, the city council, and the school committee since the modification of the city charter approximately 25 years ago; conduct a comparative analysis of the salaries of other like-sized communities; recommend an appropriate salary for the mayor, city council, and school committee; recommend a formula to be used at the beginning of each term for mayor, city council, and school committee salaries; and prepare a city ordinance for possible approval of the Beverly city council, working in conjunction with the Beverly solicitor. In addition to the data presented by the Collins Center, we also asked for and reviewed current Beverly department head salaries, current Beverly school department position salaries, information from the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, and the period of time since last increases, including information provided by Colleen Tixera and Jerry Perry. I was going to go through and read what our recommendations are, but since that's already been done, I don't think it's necessary to do that. I think probably what we should do at this point, we are ready, willing, and able to answer all of the questions that you may have.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Temkin. Questions for members of the city council? None? Counsel Flaherty?
I have a question, Mr. President. But when was the last time there was an increase? Want to show Mr. Temkin that we've been into that, or Mr. Perry?
I can. The last time that there was an increase for the city council was 25 years ago, 1995. The school committee did have one increase between then and now, and the mayor's salary has been increasing for the past couple of years, with the final increase scheduled for 2021.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Rand? Counsel Rand, I'm looking for you. You're not here again.
Mr. President, I can see that she's here, but her audio doesn't seem to be working.
Okay. Here she is. Do you want to type your question in, or join via phone? I know it's really something important and worthy, worthwhile, if you want to say. How about anybody else? Counsel Rotundo? We'll come back to Counsel Rand if she's able to join us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question. I know that the increase in salary, what will that amount to total for the city council, the school committee, and the mayor, if there's an increase starting at the year 2022?
Mr. Perry? I can answer that, if I may. I have analyzed the data. If the council supports all the recommendations of Chairman Temkin's recommendations there, in FY '22, it would amount to $25,000, because it would only incorporate the last six months of the fiscal year. And then in the subsequent year, in FY '23, it would be approximately $50,000 for all the positions incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Ains?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Perry, you and I had a really interesting conversation earlier last week about, I had, first of all, I want to say this is a phenomenal report. You can see how professional it is, all the work that's gone into it. So happy you pulled a consultant in from UMass Boston. In my opinion, the absolute right thing to do, top-notch work. Everyone, thank you so much for your service. Can't be said enough. So I just have some questions. You and I had a conversation last week, because as you know, I'm the one who's always trying to raise, lower the increase in the property taxes. And we had a conversation last week, and you said, Stacy, if you want to lower it, you're going to have to take it out of recurring income. So the first thing that I have to ask you, Mr. Perry, is where's this going to come from?
The conversation about recurring revenue is associated with the work, I know you and Counsel Hausmann have been doing, on the financial forecast. We've been talking about reoccurring revenues versus one-time expenditures, and how it impacts the next fiscal year. So that's a little after long. However, maybe what I can do, Counsel, with your permission and with the President's permission, let me kind of quickly go through my presentation. I'm going to read to the end, but maybe I'll answer a lot of these questions, and then I'll be more than happy to provide that. So let me do my thing. As you know, you passed what you made of the treaty. For those of you not familiar with it, you were allowed by charter and by ordinance to review this in non-elected years. The year to do that, you can't do it in an election year, so that's why this has been done. One of the concerns you have to be worried about, or at least be aware of, I should say, is if you take no action or you defeat this tonight, the next time you can raise this issue again is two years from now, with a new city council per conflict of interest laws, plus our city charter and whatnot, which means it would be kicked in, it wouldn't kick in until 2024, or almost four years down the road. So there is a timing pattern with all of these matters here. It's really important that the councils understand, and more importantly, the public understand, that should you support this, this is not for you individuals. It is for the future mayor, the future city council, and the future school committee. You are not really allowed to vote for salary increases for yourselves, okay? So it would kick in after the election. Now, obviously, some of you may get reelected should you, one, decide to run, and, two, you get elected, and there was all those whatevs. But you are not really allowed by law to vote for a salary for yourselves. That's why it's a forward-thinking thing, and that's why it's built into the issue here. In terms to answer Counsel Ames's question, as she knows, we've done a lot of work on that financial forecast stuff. We have like 2% to 3% built-in salary for next year. It is what they call an immaterial dollar amount. It is a dollar amount, I don't want to ignore it, but in the realm of $155 million a year, I'm very confident we'll be able to afford this. It's certainly far less expensive than the salary increases for all the employees, schools, police, fire, whatnot. So I don't see any problem affording this going forward. It will become out of the general fund budget council, to answer that question. With regard to the work of Al Temkin, and Bill Howard, and Becky Beckman, who I, it was a pleasure to get to know all three of them this year, the work they did, it was really important that the committee, the council, understand, this was an independent review. We really worked hard to make sure it was independent. You appointed independent people who have stature within the community, who are not government people whatsoever, and they really took this serious. And I was, actually, I learned quite a bit listening to how private sector people looked at all this, and quite frankly, they came to their conclusions, it's a data-driven conclusion. The data supports is based on the work that came from the UMass Collins Center, and I commend them for the work. Quite frankly, there was a lot of dialogue that, and the data supports, quite frankly, the fact that you could have even raised it higher than what they have recommended to you. And there was quite a bit of internal debate among the committee members, what was the right number, and what have you. I can assure you that the three committee members, quite frankly, came in at a much lower figure than they could have supported with the data, because they were cognizant of the sensitivity to all of this. I do want to compliment the council president, who kind of held a gun to my head a little bit to make sure, one, we did it independently, that I wrote the scope of services for the consultant, that that make it independent, and the fact that he was very clear with me that we were going to do a public hearing on this, the complete transparency and everything on the table. So, the final couple of comments, you are protecting the institutions of these positions. These are not salary increases for yourselves, or the president incumbents, whether it be the mayor of the school committee, you're protecting the institutions. I am kind of taken aback, and I've been with you almost four years, there is no excuse, in my view, to have gone 25 years without any cost of living adjustment on the city council. I think there's no excuse for having only one cost of living adjustment in 25 years on the school committee. The jobs have dramatically changed since 1995. You all know that better than I do. And it's not fair, I think, to the institutions that we need to protect to make sure that they are at least properly compensated. And I think the data as recommended by Al there supports all of that. As your budget and management analyst, it is my recommendation to you, in my independent role, to recommend this to you. I think it's the right thing to do. As the committee said more than once, who in God's green earth would want to be a mayor in the city of Beverly for the salary that we provide? It's an individual, the position is being paid less money than many of his department heads, people who actually work directly for him. It makes no sense, it's upside down. So as such, Mr. President, and Counsel Ames, I hope they answered some of your questions. I'm certainly more than happy to take on more questions, but those are my thoughts. That's where I'm at. I believe it's the right thing to do for the city, and I would hope that the council would adopt the recommendations of the elected salary review. And with that, I'll be more than happy to try to answer any further questions.
Mr. President, do you mind if I ask a few more? You're on mute. I can't hear you. So...
I know, my daughter's playing the piano.
May I ask another? Thank you. I understand that. I understand exactly where you're coming from. I think this is important work. I think generally, this is absolutely the right thing to do. Over 10 years, that's a half a million dollars. So, immaterial as it might be, I also want you to understand that bus drivers in this city operate major, heavy equipment, and transport our most valuable, precious commodity. I'm not saying you're wrong, that these need to happen, but I also have a, I have a commitment to the people who have the least amount of power in this city. I know a bus driver who lives in Ward 3 ended up in the emergency room because a child who was emotionally, physically, mentally challenged literally took a bite out of her arm for less than $25 an hour. And I don't disagree with you at all. I wish this could be put out next year, because we are in a recession. We, Counsel Hausmann and I know, we're looking at a $4 million deficit next year. And I believe that these salaries do need to come up. I do believe. But I am, I really would like you to say, where will this money come from, Mr. Perry? Because without having a cut somewhere else, I cannot tell that bus driver, or that custodian on the high school, or the buildings and grounds people, that they can't have, you know, an increase, but me, I can, who gets insurance, who gets a lot more, you know, possibly, I don't take it, but we are offered insurance, we are offered pensions, and I'm not, I am so happy you did this work. I mean, I wish it were two years out, so we had a better idea of where this budget would be, but to say we're going to have a $4 million-plus deficit next year, and then add any, any extra recurring income before taking a look at what we're going to do with the supplemental, and knowing what will happen next year, or the year after, these are tough times. And I'm not sure that the leadership paying us at the top more right now may not be the answer. In the long run, I agree with you. If this were last year, I would have voted for it in a heartbeat, in a heartbeat, because it's the right thing to do. I am totally conflicted, so I really, Mr. Perry, need to know where those dollars exactly are coming from. Thank you.
To respond to that, Counsel, the dollars will come from the general fund off the tax levy and state aid and whatnot. It will be built into the budget that will be required to do. There is one further explanation, though, that may give you some ease in your policy decision-making process, and I have yet to mention this, but I will now. It's a two-step process that's going on here. One is you're setting the salary. If you approve this, you're doing nothing more than setting the salary. However, under state law, Chapter 44, Section 31, everything is subject to appropriation. So as such, even though you may set the salaries as you are, when you get to the budget season in June, you still have the legal authority, as city councilors, if the majority of you agree with it, to cut the budget. You can also cut the salaries of the city council, if you so desire. You can cut the salary of the mayor. A little more complicated with the school committee, because they have their own budget, and they enjoy fiscal autonomy, so we really have less control on that. But even, you still have that ability come June to reduce it, depending upon what the budget looks like next year, which we really won't know till June. So you have that ability. If you want, I'm not suggesting it, but you could literally zero out the mayor's salary. You just appropriate nothing, if that's what you want to do. So you still have an opportunity. However, as I already indicated, if you don't take action this year to set the salary, not necessarily appropriate it, but set it, you're talking four years out before you can get around to doing it again. So you still have options, Counselor, to do it, but it's still my recommendation, pretty strong, that I think you should adopt this, and I hope that answers your question.
Counsel Ames, you're shaking your head again.
Well, I just firmly believe that if this is coming from recurring income, and I understand you're saying you're coming, is this coming from tax? I want the line. What are we going to cut? I want to understand, and you don't have to, you know, I need to understand what we're going to cut to be able to afford that, because it's all a matter of making choices in this budget, and it's a half a million dollars over 10 years, just respectfully. Thank you.
Well, again, you could cut the very, these very light items, if you so desire, come June. You have that ability. That's what I'm suggesting. The option is still before you. Again, you could give the mayor no salary, if that's your choice. So the answer to your question is, you can still cut it.
That's my, I am asking you, as your role, as the budget analyst, Mr. Perry, where would you suggest we cut the budget to afford this? Respectfully, completely respectfully, I'm asking you, where?
Counsel, I don't have an answer for that right now. There is no answer, and no one's going to be able to give you the answer. We will build a balanced budget come June, and at that time, I will have better answers for you when we have better numbers. To give you an answer on December 7 is impossible.
Thank you. Counselor Hausmann?
Mr. President, I think there are a number of counselors, in particular Counselor Rand, who I'm hoping can actually be heard, so I would defer to her at least.
Come back if you want, that's fine. Let's go to Counsel Rand. She's disappeared again. Let's go to Counsel Flowers.
Thank you. I wanted to just sort of, I guess, piggyback on to what Counsel Ames was talking about. What I was sitting here thinking, as we've heard the report, is I would, first of all, echo... I would first of all echo, um, the words of affirmation and support, and it, most importantly gratitude for this committee and for the work that has been done. Um, I appreciate the time and the effort. I appreciate the report very much. And I also appreciate the sentiment that ultimately we're, what we're thinking about, what we're trying to talk about is how you value, how you value the work of these positions, not necessarily the people who are in them. And so I absolutely understand that. And, um, you know, I think that is a question for all kinds of jobs and all kinds of professions and all kinds of industries. How do we, how do we, how do we show that we value certain types of work? And, and the way that our society works is that we often show we value it monetarily. There's other ways, but that is one of the ways. And so I appreciate all of that. And just what I'm thinking about is much like when the retirement board came to us as we were entering into, literally entering into this pandemic period with a recommendation to increase the, the COLA rate for retirees, which is something that I feel in my heart that we should do, that we should do for our retirees. Um, and if this had been, if it had come to us, it was, it was similar to this in my mind in that it was a, a luck of bad, the, the luck of the timing was just bad because entering into a pandemic didn't feel like, no matter how much in my heart I wanted to do that for our retirees and believe it is right, it didn't feel like a thing that we, that I could do at that moment. And I, I wish that I could. And so I think, listening to Counselor Ames' questions and thinking about those retirees and, and the COLA increase that we couldn't vote for. And I understand that it, it extrapolates out to a, a differing amount, a greater amount perhaps of money. But I also take Counselor Ames' point that over time, even a small amount of money compounds into, into more. And so I'm thinking also about all kinds of employees in our community who are working right now at, um, for low, for low wages or educators still working towards having a finished contract as they work through a pandemic. And so I guess this is not so much a question, but just putting out some of my pondering and thinking about if, if for myself, I was not able to vote for an increase for our retirees, which I firmly believe we, we should, if the community do at some point because we were in, entering into a global pandemic, this doesn't feel for me like a time when I can vote to increase these positions either, despite the fact that I do understand the sentiment that, that it's important to look at down the road. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flowers. Counselor Rand, let's try again. She was here, then she was gone.
Can you hear me? Got me now?
Perfect. Thank you, Counselor Rand.
All right.
Hold on. There might be feedback because now I'm not using headphones. Maybe the headphones are broken. First, thank you for all the IT helpers out there. Everybody was painfully watching me just mouth words. I'm sorry about that. Um, okay. So actually, my question is more of a curiosity and, um, for Mary Flanders Icardi. And I hope I said that correctly. I'm just wondering, since you are, um, you know, you're, you're an expert on this type of action and policy, I'm just wondering if I could get, hear more about your perspective and what you're seeing other communities go through as they probably deal with similar situations where it's been over a decade since these types of salaries and stipends have been raised.
Sure. Um, good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. Happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays. Um, I really appreciate the work of the committee. We don't often get such support from boards and commissions with municipalities. So from my perspective, it was really great to deal with these professionals. I think what you're bringing up, it, it's twofold here. Um, you're looking at the cost. We're in the middle of a pandemic. We're looking at fairness and justice for all employees. And, you know, whether it's the bus driver, the cafeteria worker, um, you know, the elected officials. But the scope of service was on the elected officials. And obviously, when you're looking at the salary data for the, um, school committee and the council, those are small numbers. They're small numbers. That can be absorbed with three months of a vacancy savings in almost any position. So when you think about you've got a vacancy, whether it's a patrol officer, an administrative assistant, you're going to absorb that. So I think Mr. Perry is talking about, you know, you're going to be able to absorb that. The big jump, obviously, and it's the elephant in the room, is the mayor's salary. Um, you know, so I can be blunt. I'm not living in your municipality, and I get to walk away after tonight. So, um, that's the biggest jump. What we did face is, I really appreciate the, um, city attorney who talked about the way in the past few years, the mayor's salary was adjusted. And we have a new opinion that that may not have been the proper form to do that. And when you look at the marketability and you cannot compare, what we always struggle with, and from our perspective as consultants, we do recruitments for town administrators, town managers. When you look at that spreadsheet on the town manager, town administrator pay rates versus a mayor, it's apples and oranges. They're different beasts, you know, because, uh, you know, a mayor has to live in the town. He or she is from the town. So you can't obviously make a comparison. You certainly lost a chief of staff to go to another municipality for a, a significant pay increase even higher than what the committee is recommending for the mayor's salary to be. So from my perspective, which is unique because I don't have any skin in this game, is, um, to follow up on Mr. Perry, I, I think that you have three ordinance recommendations in this report. And the committee worked on that. One is the mayor, one is the other boards and commissions, and one is the process moving forward. I, I do want to echo what Mr. Perry just said. I think you can adopt the, the recommendations and, and receive the report from this committee and then look at the budget numbers in the future year. Because quite frankly, the school committee and the city council is not where the budget cost is. You know, it's in the mayor's salary. And I think all of us are looking at FY 2022 with scary lenses on our faces saying, how can we afford anything? Never mind increase an amount. I think what this does, though, is provide the mechanism for you to have the conversation. If you don't adopt any, I mean, you could amend it and say, make it 130, but you can do that in the moment, in January of, uh, or December, getting ready for that next year's budget. So I would say adopt it with the caveat that the system in place that you're adopting is look at the budget needs at the time. I'm, I'm guessing not anybody is worried about the $1,000 or the $500 for the board members. It's the mayor's salary. And I can say it out loud because I don't know any of you. Um, so I think that it makes sense to accept the report, perhaps adopt it, whether you want to say pending funding, but I think the language in there does say pending funding. And, and take a look at it at that time. Um, you're right, you know the size of your budgets. And you don't want to be cavalier with $50,000 over all of these years because $50,000 a year is a position someplace, right? You know, what are you paying your administrative staff? What are you paying your highway staff? That's a position. That's an entry-level teacher. You know, and it's hard to vote now for the future. But I think if you focus on, as Mr. Perry said, you have the ability to not fund that position. But if you don't do anything, it will be 120. It will be the current pay that's already voted for January 1 of 2021. And you can vote at that point at the budget to not increase it. So this is why we grappled with, and the attorney was incredibly helpful in saying, you can't put in a guaranteed increase. You can only put in the mechanism of how to move forward. So this is what the committee struggled with, um, and said, let's give it to them and say, um, you as a council, you know full well, you can say yes, no, reduce it, but you can't increase it. So if you want to increase it, you're out of luck. But, um, you could say, no, we're not able to do that either politically, socially, transparency, for all of those reasons. We'll make it 125, not 135. You have that ability. Theoretically, you could amend that tonight. But I don't know what purpose that serves, but that's a, that's a cultural, local issue, not one. When you look at the survey of the other mayors, you will see the data does support the amount that the committee recommended. And they, you know, so I think that it's up to you. I do think that you're, you're, just like with your union employees, you vote a classification system. You're not voting individual salary. So it's a little bit of an apple and an orange when you're looking at one person who sits in a position. Because it's not only the person, it's the position. So I think adopting the structure that's recommended by the hard work of the committee, you could get to that. And knowing that based on the budget constraints, for all you know, you may be cutting the mayor's salary to 100,000. But it would be that that's what the goal is. So I'm happy to answer other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Icardi. Um, any more questions? Or I'll go to Counselor Houseman as the next one up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. But, but I have, I do believe Counselor, Counselor Flaherty is, is typed in ahead of me, so.
Yeah, he's gonna hold off for a bit.
Okay. All right. So I also have a question for, uh, I'm sorry if I mispronounce. Um, our consultant, uh, Mary Flanders Icardi? Is that how you pronounce it?
Erica Icardi, yes.
Thank you. So my question has to do with, uh, the observation about the mayor's salary. Uh, because frankly, myself, and I, I won't speak for my other colleagues, but I wouldn't be surprised if they would agree. No one runs for city council for the money. Um, and, and likewise for the school committee. So, you know, from an institutional point of view, I don't, you know, I, I, I understand Mr. Perry's argument. I, I think, you know, there's a lot of validity to it from an institutional point of view. And, and I do also, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the committee for their, for their work. Uh, you know, Beverly is a very special community because of the volunteer citizens we have who contribute, uh, contribute to the, to the wheel of the, of the, of the city. So having said that, my question is, if you look at the analysis, uh, um, of the mayor's salaries, the median, uh, on the selected communities is 120. Uh, and the median on the, find my, my page. Uh, maybe we don't have a median, but the, but if you look at the list of the area town administrator and managers, it's, it's very significantly much higher than the median of, uh, mayors in the towns that were, that, that, you know, were, were selected. And I guess the, uh, by definition, the, you know, the municipalities with manag- with managers and administrators is different than the one for mayors. But could you elaborate? Uh, if you know, or if the committee really sort of examined why across the board, mayors get such a lower salary than town administrators and managers? Because they do, in the main, uh, substantially have the same responsibilities. Thank you.
You're absolutely right. And the committee really struggled with this issue. Um, it is the same work, uh, in many instances, uh, across, uh, cities and towns. You're the chief executive, you're the chief exec- unless you're in a city where there's a city administrator versus, but most of these cities are, um, and towns are town administrators, uh, strong mayors, they're actually running the organizations. The difference is, and, you know, we could, we could chat all day about it, but the committee really did struggle with this, which is where they came up with in making it attractive enough for people to want to become mayor because they could apply elsewhere. The difference is, and with all due respect to the foolish people who want to run for office because they're so dedicated, and I'm looking at a screen full of them, you know? I'm an elected town meeting member in my hometown of Shrewsbury, you know, and I don't know why I do it, you know? But you all are fools. The difference is, a mayor, whether it's right or wrong, does not have to have a master's degree, does not have to have prior experience, can be a political appointment, could be, you know, a TV, you know, reality show host. It could be, you know, a mayor could be anyone. And the view is that the council, who is elected by the people, is the legislative part, and the mayor is the administrative. It's just historically true. So the committee did grapple with, should we be comparing to mayors? Or should we be comparing to the region like we do for department heads? You know, you look at your department heads' pay relative to each other and relative to the market in the area. Those are, those are data points that you might want to look at in the future. So I think, and, and I will let the chairman speak to that, that when they looked at the mayors, yes, Beverly is in line with the, the mayors currently. However, Beverly, you know, every city or town is special, but Beverly is uniquely situated that you have more complex issues than some of your surrounding cities. So you have to, it's not just a data exercise. We like to say it's a science and an art because you have to look at not just the numbers, but what is the culture? What is the city providing, providing to its residents, its citizens, its business, its businesses? You know, so I think that's where the committee was coming from. You're absolutely right. If you looked at mayors, your salary is right on spot. But if you look at the town administrators in the area, some are in much more, and take this with due respect, simple municipalities, meaning not as complex as Beverly. Uh, and there's a significant pay increase. So what we recommended, and I do believe that the committee adopted, was, okay, let's look internally. The fact that you're paying your department heads more than your chief executive is really what should be driving this conversation. And I think that was the thing that kind of spun it with the, um, with the committee saying, how can we have people who report to this person, you know, be significantly less? Notwithstanding the external? Because what you're probably going to do, and what we have seen professionally with the Collins Center and our recruitments, is people work a few years as a mayor and then go be a town administrator or a town manager someplace. So it's a great training ground, but in the meantime, you're getting dedicated service. So really looking at the internal structure is the way to go. And I think, and I would ask the chairman to maybe follow up on how the, the committee deliberated on it. It's not an unusual phenomenon, but, um, you know, i- it's the reality out there. And who would want the job? That's another thing. We see more and more the pool of town administrators, uh, town managers is getting thinner and thinner. So if you don't make it at least attractive, you're going to have foolish people who are dedicated to their municipality and their cities who want to do this because they're dedicated. But you also want to be fair. Fairness and justice is a big issue when it comes to pay and classification within an organization.
Mr. President, if I may follow up briefly?
Um, okay, then we'll go to Mr. Temkin.
Okay.
Counselor Houseman? Am I muted? No, I'm not muted. Counselor Houseman, unmute.
Oh, I thought you wanted to go.
No, you wanted to follow up, and then we'll go to.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Okay. Time lag on the, on the audio. Uh, yeah. Uh, yeah. So I want to thank you for your, for your response. I, I find it very interesting in a couple of respects because it sort of made me change my mind that, uh, I'll be interested in my, my colleagues' sort of feeling on this. Uh, I, I, I have, I have been feeling that the mayor's office ought to have an increase uh, because of the level of, of expertise required for it. But, but as I reflect about it, you know, um, I want someone who runs for the off, for that office, not for the salary. I want someone who runs for the office because, as you put it, they're foolish enough to want the job. And, and. And, and so I think that, for example, our mayor, prior to this, in the private sector, you know, he had an MBA from Harvard Business School. He wasn't running for that position for, for the money. And, and so if, in the private sector, we're competing with our department heads to make sure we don't lose, you know, valued members of our department heads, I don't always want a race between mayor's salary and those department heads to try to come to some kind of parity just for the sake of having parity. Probably those department heads will always earn more than the mayor's office. So I find myself sort of in a, in a little bit of a quandary, sort of rethinking my position about the notion that the mayor's office ought to get a bump. When I look at the average, you know, I look at the median salary of other communities, where, as you put it, you know, Beverly is, you know, is right in the median. So it's a really interesting conversation, and I'm interested to hear what, what other members, you know, my colleagues and the committee members may have to say to that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll go to Mr. Temkin for his comments to follow up.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's really not a whole lot more I can say than what Mary gave you for information. I think that, though we studied and looked at the town administrators, town managers, we kept coming back to the, kind of the same discussion each time that we kind of varied off into that, into that area. And that included the fact that although the median right now is what it is, as you brought up, Council Hausmann, those are gonna change as time goes on. We also looked at, as we've already discussed and Mary brought up, the opportunity to attract the right people that want to run for the position and then want to manage $155 million budget and can do so adequately. And then finally, I think, and it just ended up becoming the biggest issue is what Council Hausmann, you just brought up, is that, you know, we, we understand that positions of public safety and public works are commonly paid higher than a mayor, and we didn't have any real issue with that. We actually kind of think that makes a little bit of sense. But we really grappled with, however, as Mary brought up, is that the Public Services Director, the Finance Director, and the City Solicitor are being paid more than their boss. And with the increase next year, in 2021, to 120,000, they are still paid more. And, and we just, as a committee, we just didn't feel like that was the right thing to have happening on top of all the other data that we studied. And that's really what it came down to, was, was that. And, you know, it's, it's, it's fair to say that the committee did discuss actually a higher number than what you were seeing on the, on the recommendation. But we agreed that that was the right place to go at this time, and that was the recommendation that we had made.
Thank you, Mr. Temkin. Do any other members of the council, of the council have any comments? Council Flaherty, is that you again?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I want to talk what Council Hausmann talked about a few minutes ago. I had my reservations, and I still do during COVID time, given these increases as we move forward. But I think some good points were made that we can move forward on this and not give the increase during the budget time. And I think we need to separate it, because I believe this committee did an outstanding job of setting the mechanism and the structure in place to move forward in the, in the future. So I do see the, the value in that. It puts more onus on us during budget time, but I do believe we can still move ahead with the structure that is recommended and not give those increases, maybe especially at the council and the school committee level, and maybe give a little bump to the, to the mayor, because we want to make sure that's competitive. And maybe it's not this coming June, you know, when we, when we vote on that, we'll have to remind ourselves of that when the time comes, because when June, we're still gonna be in a pandemic, and it doesn't feel right when we're laying off people and businesses are closing, that we're giving those increases, even though it's warranted, and I understand that, but it puts it, puts it off for another year or so for that. But like Mr. Perry talked about, if we vote no on this whole thing, that puts it off four more years. This gives us a mechanism to work with, and it makes a, a better structure to move forward for the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, and Council Flaherty, to follow up on you, I would agree with you. It's about the mechanism. It's not this council's decision to make. It's the council who will be sitting, that'll be sworn in in January of 2022, and they'll be dealing with the budget for 2023. God, it sounds so far out. But I think it would be our due diligence just to put it in place and let future city councils take it from there, as opposed to sitting on it and then having another independent committee go through the motions three years from now or two years from now. Thank you. Counselor Ames?
Just quickly, I, I generally agree with everything that's been said. And I cannot, from the bottom of my heart, I am grateful to all of, to the committee who put this together and the forethought and the professionalism involved. I am still struggling. I would love to know if there's a way to push it out 12 months. And given the fact that we're not looking at a decrease in the increase of the tax rate, and that we have, where the administration is planning to take $750,000 out of recurring revenue to pay for the fire truck. We need a fire truck, but it's not coming out of free cash. That I think the least we could do potentially, if not knowing where this money is coming from that we're agreeing to, is to push it out another 12 months. When we know that the economy pretty much will have recovered and that we're gonna be on, on, on just a more solid footing. And so I just ask that, that we think about that. And I agree, it's important to put a process in place, but I, I don't want us to be a body that doesn't understand that tax dollars come from taxpayers, that we're, we're managing the people's money. And that is a solemn honor to be able to do. And there are a lot of people out of work, there are a lot of people underwater, living on credit cards right now. And I just, I, the thought of doing this right now without every serious option is just terrifying to me. And, but that being said, I, I cannot praise the process more. This is not, this is not the process of the committee. This is how we, as a body, and the administration chooses to pay for it, and at what cost, because everything comes at a cost. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Perry, do you have anything to add? I know Counselor Ames just talked about pushing it out 12 months, but aren't we already doing that?
I really have nothing to add, other than you can't push it out 12 months because the charter doesn't allow for it. So if, if you decide not to do anything this evening or the next, however you process this, you're gonna have to wait till the year, 2022, to revisit this issue. And if you should adopt anything two years from now, it still wouldn't kick in for a year and a half after that. So I go back to what the consultant has said, and I've said, and I think if you ask the finance people, it's a process, you don't have to pay for it when the budget season comes. I can assure you, we will balance our budget. Maybe we wouldn't appropriate these funds, I don't know. But if you don't pass the process, then you're just kind of where you are at now, and you're talking four years down the road. So other than that, there's not much more I can really add, Mr. President, to the dialogue.
Yeah, just real quick, Mr. Perry, but when I, when I say pushing it out 12 months, it means nothing we take a vote on, not, I mean, if this was voted in favor, nothing would happen for 12 months, nothing would go into effect. You wouldn't even consider it until January of 2022.
Correct, Mr. Perry. How would, if you were to adopt it tonight, you would then have another conversation in June when you do the budget. You'll have the various line items, you could reduce them if you so desire to do so. If you'll know more about your budget situation then, than you do today on December 7th. There's no question of that. That's an opportunity there. And if you do vote for it next June, the appropriation, it would not kick in till the beginning of January of 2022. You're right. So it's when you have a brand-new mayor, a brand-new city council, and a brand-new school committee duly inaugurated in the beginning of January 22. So it is way down the road financially, and it's all due to this conflict of interest issue where elected officials can't vote for salaries for themselves. And the budget will be taken care of in June. We can cut anything we want, including these salaries.
But Council, I just want to answer Counselor Ames's question, because, you know, if I answer it wrong, Mr. Perry, back me up. You couldn't have an increase in 20, that, if, if you put the increase out to 1, January of 2023, that would be a sitting council approving their own raise. Is that correct?
I believe it would be, Mr. President. I would really defer to the city solicitor on that, because that would be a little different, kicking it out farther. I, I don't know, it's more of a legal question, but I believe you're correct if you ask my opinion on that. But I defer to Stefan Williams on that.
Ms. Akardi?
The only point I would follow up on is, and the committee did discuss this of, should we have a July implementation date? So when you're dealing with a fiscal year issue, one thing you could do, and I believe because it would be prior to January of '23, you could implement anything you do for July 1 of '22, so that it would be six months later, which would be a separate budget year, which would then give you a little bit more data of where you are financially. So when you say you're voting for the next budget, it would be prior to the next election, so you wouldn't be in that situation of that group voting for their own raises. So I think if you adopt the methodology tonight, you still have that flexibility of giving an increase. We do it all the time with collective bargaining agreements. We split the year, you know, we say, we'll do this in July and this in January. So there's nothing saying that the, the group as a whole, when you have your public hearing, says, okay, we're not gonna do it for January of '22, and we're not gonna do it for January of '23, because that will be a new council. But we could do an increase at any amount, so long as it's not higher than what you're doing in, in July of, of '22. So I think you have that buffer, and I think Counselor Ames, that's kind of what you're saying. It's too soon. You're feeling it, and, and you can say, oh, 15,000 is not a lot. Well, it's a lot, it's a lot in somebody's salary, and I can hear the emotion and what you all are talking about. But doing this does not prevent you. You can't make it the following year, because that will be a new council, because, you know, you're one of these crazy, crazy cities that has two-year terms, not four-year terms. So think of, you know, a charter change. So, but you can defer it to July of '22, which might give you more data and a better comfort in your budget process. So, you know, I would, I strongly suggest that there's nothing in what you adopt tonight that ties you to the numbers you're gonna give. It is the process, as the counselor said. You're adopting the mechanism forward. So when you have that public hearing, whether it's next June, you may say, we're not ready to give it at this point. We can do it for half a year, or we will revisit it. Because this, this, and if you do it for half a year, it's only half the amount of the increase. And again, as Mr. Perry said, it's not a lot of dollars, but it's really the impression and the perception that it gives, because we don't want to make light of any dollars. So I would, I would encourage you to move forward, knowing, and even if there needs to be an amendment, I don't know, I don't know the legal, how you adopt it. But I think as it comes up, that's when you make your decisions. I think you could defer it by six months, and in a new fiscal year, you would have a much better projection of revenues and expenditures. So that's my two cents, and maybe a, a bridge to a recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Akardi. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, Mr. President. I haven't been here for the entire, part of the entirety of this discussion. I've heard about the last 10 minutes, and so I just wanted to maybe frame, reframe this a little bit and, or clarify. So it is the case, in fact, that if the council or the city wants to increase the salaries of any elected officials for the next term, okay, not the term that the elected officials are currently serving, that an ordinance needs to be adopted before the end of the year, increasing those salaries. Period. Now, this discussion that it's, that's occurred about the budget and the appropriation, that's not something that I've given an opinion on. I understand, Mr. Perry, and, and it is definitely the case that the city council has to appropriate money before the city can spend it, and the mayor would have to insert an amount into the budget. So I, we, we are definitely in agreement with that. I don't know if we've ever had to examine the question of if an amount is explicitly set by salary when the charter itself says that an amount for the mayor in particular shall be set by ordinance. You know, what do we do? Historically, what has happened is the amount has been set, and that has been the amount paid to the mayor. The charter, interestingly, says the city council may set a salary for city counselors and school committees. So there's a shall for the mayor, and there's a may for the city counselors and the school committee. So I, I think I just, I'm flagging that, because I, I think my suggestion was to be, that, that it, this most straightforward thing would be to make a decision about whether you want to raise these salaries tonight or not. Because I think, assuming that it's going to be clear-cut, that when budget time comes, there's not going to be some conflict, at least in the language of the charter and the ordinance around, in Chapter 41, Section 31, around appropriations and how we reconcile all that, that may not be as straightforward as it seems to be, you know, sounding right now. And I think that the charter is very clear that if you are going to increase the salary, it shall be effective on January 1st of the following, the first year of the following term. So I don't think the charter contemplates mid-year salary increases. And it certainly doesn't contemplate the council increasing the salary during the course of a term.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Counsel Flowers?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to, I guess, just circle back and just sort of reflect that my feelings about whether or not this is the right time to put this mechanism in place are not indicative of my feelings about the work of this committee. And I, I hope I was clear about that before. You know, again, I want to make the comparison to the retirement board. I feel like their presentation and their, their reasoning and their data about why we should raise the COLA base for our retirees are sound and make sense. And I felt very much the same about their presentation that I feel about the work of this committee, which has been really excellent, which is that I respect it. I respect the work that went in, the expertise. The data, to my mind, the data also supports raising that, that COLA level. We're quite low compared to our other cities and towns that are similar to Beverly. And, and yet, I guess I would say, and yet, it didn't feel like something that I felt that I could do as much as I wanted to in March. And I guess I, I feel similarly about this. But I just wanted to make clear that, for me, that's not, that's not because I'm dismissing the expertise for me, that's not, that's not because I'm dismissing the expertise or the work that the committee did. I feel like it's, it's the unfortunate, um, just the, the trick of the timing, I guess. I, I also am just thinking about, um, Ms. Icardi, I hope I'm saying your name right, Ms. Icardi. Um, she mentioned, you know, of course, we don't want to be careless with even, you know, $15,000. Um, and, and I'm thinking about, when I hear that, I agree. And I'm thinking about for some of our positions, for example, our starting paraprofessionals in Beverly, a starting paraprofessional doesn't make much more than $15,000 in Beverly. And so I think for me, you know, again, thinking about the times that we're in, our educators, um, teaching and working in a global pandemic and doing so without a contract. I think there's a host of reasons that, that have nothing to do for me with whether or not the committee's report is sound as to why it feels for me that this, I'm, I'm not sure this is the time that we can put this, this in place.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Any other members of the council wish to make a comment or a question? If I don't hear from any more councils, I'll throw it out to the public for a moment. Uh, are there any members, uh, from the public on this call that would like to make a comment or ask a question? If you could type your name into the chat. Okay. So we can do one of three things. We can, I can ask for a motion to approve. Um, I can ask for a motion to deny, or I can ask for a motion to receive and place on file. From gauging from everybody's comments, I do not think that we have uh, enough votes to pass this this evening. I would hate to vote it down, uh, meaning no further action. So, um, I mean, obviously I want to thank all the work that Mr. Temkin, Mr. Howard and Ms. Beckman put into the committee. And as well as Mr. Perry, I understand the mechanism part of it, putting it in place. But, um, if there aren't five other city councils that agree with that, then, um, it's kind of sounds like it's dead in the water. So I would entertain a motion, unless somebody wants to make a motion to approve.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, I make a motion to receive and place this, uh, on file. And I guess it would be, um, uh, would it be all orders, uh, I guess we have to vote for each one of them separately?
Uh, to, uh, receive and place on file, order number 241, 241A and 241B.
If we can do them all together like that, yes, that would be my motion.
Second to Counsel Housman's motion.
Second.
Um, discussion, or are we all good? Uh, Council Flaherty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so if we go ahead with his, um, recommendation, where, where would that put us? Or could we put a, could we hold it for the, for two weeks?
No, we can't hold it because this needs to be done before the end of the calendar year.
We can't do that on the 21st, no?
No, because it needs two readings.
Okay.
Mr. President, it needs to, so it's my understanding, and, and the clerk can clarify this. Um, that the key requirement in the charter is, is that, um, publication needs to occur in the newspaper 10 days before final passage. The charter actually doesn't speak in terms of first, second and third readings. And, and, you know, and going back and looking at, um, some of how the way the council has dealt with ordinances in the past, as long as the ordinance was published in the paper 10 days before tonight's meeting, um, that, uh, there would be no problem. In fact, of course, if you vote, I think if you voted tonight, and it would be okay if you voted in two weeks as well. So, um, in my mind, there would be time to vote in two weeks. Um, and I say all of this without weighing in on the policy of it one way or the other. I'm just sort of pointing out procedural issues. Um, Madam Clerk, I, I believe it was published November 27?
Correct.
Okay.
So it can be passed tonight because it's been 11 days.
That's my, that is my view as well.
All right, I get, I get from Ms. Williams that it could, we could hold it. If Council Flaherty chooses to hold it, we could vote on it on the 21st. Ms. Kent, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Council Flaherty, do you wish to do that?
Well, I'd like to see what the other council thinks. So I think they'll make us, give us a little bit more time to kind of see if we wanted to move this forward. Because like you said, Mr. President, I don't see the votes to pass us tonight unless I'm misunderstanding what Mr. Howison was doing.
Mr. President, I may.
Uh, let me go to Counsel Feldman first. We haven't heard from her at all.
Thank you. Um, I, I think that I really appreciate, um, City Solicitor Williams being on the call and, um, expressing that we should either decide on it or not. Because I'm, I'm a little wary of the mechanism concept at this point in time, um, and putting that in place. I feel like we thought we had control to some extent of setting the tax levy recently. And then when it came down to the fine print and the nitty gritty of the matter, we actually did not have a chance to revisit that. And so I think that waiting, um, at least two weeks to kind of look at the fine print on something like putting the mechanism in place. Um, and then having the ability to actually manipulate it is worth, is worth the time and worth the wait. Because I don't disagree with all of the recommendations of the committee. And I think the work is excellent and I really appreciate, um, all the hard work that was put in. But I'm just really, I am concerned that we won't be able to take it back if it goes to a vote tonight just because we say we put the mechanism in place, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you very much, Counsel Feldman. The Counsel Flaherty will, oh, Counsel Housman, my bad, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't have objection if, if other councils would like more time to consider this. And it's the opinion of the city solicitor that that option exists. Uh, I, I don't have objection to, uh, councillors having an opportunity to do that.
Great. All right, so you will withdraw your.
I'm willing to, I'm, I'm willing to withdraw my, uh, my motion.
Okay. So we'll hold this until, um, 12/21. Now, Mr. Perry, can I, can I dissolve the committee this evening now that they've given their report?
Uh, in my view, you can, Mr. President. However, if you'd be kind enough before you call that question, um, as you know, this is a joint meeting. Uh, we have a quick, uh, administrative action of the, uh, Elected Salary Review Committee. Uh, Chairman Temkin, we have to call, uh, a motion to approve or to accept the minutes of November 10th, 2020. If, um, you have permission to get a motion. And second to that, I'll, I'll do a roll call vote.
Let's do it. Uh, motion to adjourn? So moved.
Uh, roll call vote, Beckman? Uh, didn't hear from her, Howard?
Yes.
And Temkin?
Yes.
So that's a two-up and vote. Uh, the other action, Alan, would be a motion to adjourn. But before we go to that, I just want to take a moment to personally thank you, Jill and Becky, for all the hard work you've done. Uh, it was really a pleasure for my practice to get to know all three of you. I think you did great work, no matter whatever the outcome of this becomes. It's certainly the prerogative of the council. But, uh, uh, I have had some feedback from some colleagues throughout the Commonwealth that they're probably going to use your template to, to their own studies in their own communities when they have these similar challenges. So with that in mind, uh, Mr. Temkin, uh, I guess, uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, Beckman?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Uh, and Temkin?
Yes.
Thank you very much, folks. I really appreciate it. Mr. President, the committee's done and, uh, I appreciate you taking it out of order and, in my view, dissolve the committee at this point.
Okay. Before I do that, I'm going to hand over the source for one more time. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this may not be the time to, to comment on this. I just, if the council in between now or for, for the next meeting, um, is, is interested in hearing, um, more information from me. I heard some suggestion about a mechanism. It, it would be helpful to actually have some clarity on what the question is and, um, actually have the council vote on what question it would like the law department to answer. I'm not sure that that's what is being requested. Um, but on a, a matter such as this, that would be the way to proceed. Um, and the reason I'm stating that is because, again, the charter, i- it's very straightforward. It doesn't talk about putting a mechanism in place. It talks about passing an ordinance, setting an amount of a set of salaries for elected officials. And again, Mr. Perry and I have talked about, about chapter 44, section 31. He's absolutely right that before the city can spend any money, it has to be appropriated by the city council. Um, I, I think, you know, we haven't really had occasion to have to determine what we do when there's a, there's a conflict between what an ordinance mandates and, and what the officials actually want to do when it becomes budget time. And in two weeks, I'm not really sure that's going to be that much clear. You know, I mean, I think one could argue that, yes, absolutely. It doesn't matter what the ordinance says. The city council appropriated, the mayor has to put it into the budget. If the charter says, on the other hand, that the city council shall establish a salary for the mayor and by ordinance, the city council does in fact establish a salary for the mayor, what do we do then? So, um, it would help, I, I would need a question actually formulated, imposed. Um, if, if this, if the council does want, um, information from me on December 21st. I'm not saying you do it, but I would just ask that if, if that's the direction you're headed in. Please, um, articulate that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Um, so what I'll do is we're going to hold this. I'm going to close out, entertain a motion to close out public hearing.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Ms. Kent, roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Yes. Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. Public hearing is closed. Um, thank you, everybody, for your comments, your time and your efforts. Ms. Icardi, thank you for checking in from Shrewsbury. Uh, and I can't thank our committee enough. Uh, I entertain a motion to, uh, go out of order and go to order number 269, Council President, dissolution of the Elected Salary Review Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Housman? Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. And now I would entertain a motion to dissolve our Elected Salary Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. Uh, now we're on, uh, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our meeting that was held on November 23rd, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
I have a question, President. Um, did you make a motion to hold or just to close the public hearing? I didn't hear anything on the hold.
Look, we closed the public hearing, but Counsel Flaherty used his, uh, council prerogative to hold the vote for a meeting.
Okay, so we don't need a roll call?
No, you do not. Um, let's go to communications from his honor, the mayor.
Whoop, that's me, right?
That's you.
All right. Order 256. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $44,000 Community Combat Cabinet IT Grant through the Executive Office of Administration and Finance. This grant funding will be used to upgrade the city's network backup infra, infrastructure, which will improve network of operations, enhance system security and provide for reliable avoidance of system failure. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expanded for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on Monday, December 7th. Thank you sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Um, Ms. Barrett, Director of Grants is here. Do you want to, um, talk about each one of these individually briefly?
Yes, uh, thank you, Council President. If I could just say a very brief, um, thing about each grant. I'll start with the IT grant. Um, I worked very closely with our IT Director, Russ Fisk, to secure this grant. We actually secured the same grant two years ago for the police and fire dispatch systems. And so, um, this will help protect our data and enhance our security. So a very important grant.
Um, councils, any questions or comments? Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the request.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Ames?
Feldman? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. I just noticed that, um, our Ward 6 School Committee Representative, Lurenne Devisnick, typed into the chat. Ms. Visnick?
Mr. President, I was going to make an observation and ask a question about, um, closing the public meeting on your previous item. It has already passed, so I'm welcome to go back on mute.
Go back on mute, okay. Thank you. Um, Ms. Kent, number 257.
Order number 257. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $75,000 Accelerating Climate Resiliency Grant from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. MAPC has partnered with the Bar Foundation to accelerate climate resilience in the region. This grant funding will be used for citywide tree planting initiative that will improve air quality, sequester carbon dioxide, help mitigate, mitigate heat island effects and enhance storm weather management. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be extended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting. Thank you sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I worked very closely on this grant with Phil Klimowitz, who's a foreman in the Public Services Department, uh, dealing with trees and, and arborist. And also Emily Hutchins, who's our Assistant Director of Planning. And again, this is for a citywide tree planting. And I just wanted to see if Emily Hutchins might be able to say a word or two about this grant. Because we are very excited to secure this, uh, grant, grant for the city.
That's nice. Ms. Hutchins is still here. Emily?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Catherine. Uh, I'd just like to second Catherine's note that we're really excited to be receiving this grant. It, um, it's to plant, uh, 70 trees in locations around the city, um, specifically that are impacted by heat island effect. So, um, it's a, there are a good number of locations that are specified in the grant that are in Ward 3, uh, Counselor Ames. Um, I just want to call that out. Um, so we're looking forward to, um, planting those trees in, um, the next year or so. Um, there is also some funding and some scope for some community engagement. So we will be working with members of the community, um, to help plant some of those trees and provide information on, uh, tree maintenance and why this is so important.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins.
Mr. President, if I could add to that?
Please, Mayor Cahill.
So I, I, I don't want to speak on every grant that, that we apply for and get, because in, with a lot of them, it's team members who bring an opportunity, and I just say, yeah, go after it. Uh, um, and I want to say, because I, I don't say it enough, but Ms. Barrett is probably the best grant director, the best grant doctor around. Um, I think you know that, you know, we, it took us three tries to get the grant director we have now, and the two people who worked in the position prior were both wonderful people and wonderful professionals, but for various reasons, they, they weren't, they aren't still here, you know, their, their own professional opportunities. We tried to get Ms. Barrett to apply for the position, uh, a couple of times, and she didn't. And when she, when we finally got her to, we, we've been incredibly fortunate to have all she brings to the table. Um, and that's not to miss a chance to, to, um, thank Ms. Hutchins for all the incredible work she does in planning and on everything she works on. I will say on this one, I just want to note that, um, we were really looking around for a way to plant more trees. If you remember the storm that we had, I forget if it was September or October, but a year ago in the fall, we had that storm where we lost 124 mature trees around the city in about three hours, one night. And so, you know, Mr. Klimowitz and his department have a certain capacity annually for planting trees, because it, it's not just the planting, it's the caring for the trees over the course of that season, to get them far enough along that they can withstand their first winter and have taken root and, and grow, you know, grow strong. So the ability to get this grant money to bring in a, a good chunk, and, and what we found is, it's not exact, but it's close to $1,000 per tree, to, to buy trees that are right sized to plant, and then to be able to care for them through the season and, and get them to winter. So, uh, this is an exciting grant. As Ms. Hutchins mentioned, a bunch of the trees are going to, I think most of them are going to do Ward 3. They're actually focused on what's deemed our environmental justice neighborhoods downtown. Um, and so it's, you know, it's, it's to serve as a carbon sink, these trees, also to shade and to cool, so they're, you know, for many, many good reasons, we're, we're looking to plant them. And this grant opportunity showed itself, and the team went after it, did a great job in, in securing the funds. So I just want to thank everybody involved.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Uh, Counselor Houseman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just want to say I'm also, uh, very excited about this, uh, grant and, and the, you know, sort of the mission around, uh, the placement of, of these trees for heat sinks and, and, uh, you know, for placement of, uh, you know, in environmental equity. Uh, Ms. Hutchins, uh, if you could, uh, $1,000 a tree, could you give me a, a sense of, uh, your sort of the caliber of the tree, in other words, the, the, you know, the, how large, uh, uh, these trees would be when planted, um, and maybe want to do specific, uh, locations if you, if, if have identified them?
Um, so I do not have the grant open right now. Um, I can, I can go grab it in just a minute, but I would, I'd have to defer to Phil Klimowitz, who we worked very closely with on this grant, um, and, because he really, he's, he's the tree guy, he has all of that information. I, I really just provided, uh, some of the support and the, um, the climate action information that, uh, provided the backup for the plan. Uh, but they will be all of a sufficient caliber, um, to make it through the years, or to get through that first year and to survive and hopefully thrive. Um, maintenance is included, um, in this grant, so that does, that little over $1,000 per tree includes maintenance for that first year, um, to ensure that these stabilize, um, they, and they start to thrive in their new spaces.
Uh, thank you very much. I'll follow up, uh, offline with Mr. Klimowitz, uh, a very exciting grant. Thank you very much.
I can, I can send you those numbers, though, uh, Counselor Houseman.
Sure, I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. Uh, Counselor Ames?
Mr. President, why don't we do this? Will, will Klimowitz to write a, a brief letter you can read into the record on the 23rd? Just because I, I think, you know, since Counsel brought it up, and they're great questions, there may be members of the public who are interested in hearing as well. Both, both the caliber, you know, and, and then the locations. We can, we can send you some information on that.
Great idea, Mayor Cahill. Thank you. Counselor Ames?
Thank you. And just to be brief, um, first, thank you very much, Mrs. Barrett. You always amaze me with the vast resources and ability to bring so many grants to our economy. It's so important. And thank you for this one in Ward 3. I'm also really excited about the, um, the participation piece, because I may, I mean, believe it or not, I've had a couple of residents tell me where they don't want a tree. So I think the buy-in from the community for traffic or other reasons, I think this is generally great to have them downtown, but I, I think it's wonderful that it'll be a, a truly collaborative experience. Thank you for all that hard work.
Thank you, Counselor Ames. Anybody else? I entertain a motion to approve the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Lettando?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. Ms. Kent?
Order number 258. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $40,000 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant from the Executive Office of the Public Safety and Security Office of Grants and Research. This grant funding will be used to purchase equipment for the police department. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmark, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on Monday, December 7th. Thank you, sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, Council President. Um, so this grant is one that we typically receive every year. Last year, uh, for some odd reason, it wasn't offered, and typically we get about $20,000 from the JAG grant, and this year, uh, the amount was doubled to 40,000. And Captain Rich Russo worked on this grant, so I believe he's on the call if he wants to say a few words. I just wanted to say as an aside, it's always such a pleasure to work with our Beverly police officers on these grants. They're all very professional and competent and responsive, and, um, I just wanted to give a shout out to Chief LaLasher and, and his department, because, um, they're really wonderful to work with. So, Rich, if you want to say a couple of words about the JAG grant?
Captain Russo?
Yes, so, uh, thank you, um, President Guanxi, thank you, Catherine, for the kind words. The, uh, the JAG grant was to, which we secured, was to provide some enhanced communications equipment, um, some special radios that allow us to talk on multiple frequencies to, uh, our state, our local counterparts, state police counterparts, and maritime assets, uh, either from vehicles or the station. We also are upgrading some of our cruiser radios, which are in need of upgrade, and also to, uh, purchase some extra personal protective equipment for our officers' helmets, um, Level 4 body armor and shields, face shields for their helmets. So, uh, much needed equipment that will definitely enhance our capabilities, both in the communication side and the protection side. So thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Uh, any questions or comments from members of the city council? Seeing none, I will, uh, entertain a motion to approve the grant.
So moved.
Second.
You're going to roll call, Ms. Kent?
Yes.
Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Lettando?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. And thank you to Chief LaLasher for being here this evening. Ms. Kent?
Order number 259. I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $37,908 municipal road safety program. Grant from the Department of Safety. P O P S S, Office of Grant Research. This funding is made possible by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and will be used for traffic enforcement campaigns for the goal of reducing vehicle crashes and the resulting injuries and loss of life. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmark, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on Monday, December 7th, 2020. Thank you, sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, Council President. Um, this grant I worked very closely with Sergeant Mike Canterbury on, and he was unable to make the meeting tonight, so I think Captain Russo might be able to say a couple of words about what this grant funding will be useful for, and, um, and why it's really important, uh, funding for the, the police department.
Thank you, Captain.
Hello again. So this, uh, this grant is the municipal sa- uh, road safety grant. Uh, it's going to cover several areas. It's going to cover, uh, enforcement, equipment, and education and training. The enforcement is our high visibility enforcement, such as impaired driving, click at a ticket, distracted driving, and the, uh, speed, um, reduction campaign. Equipment, things like handheld radars, LiDAR, and data collection equipment. And education and training deals with a lot. This one's where the grant was a little different than in the past. Cooperative youth bicycle safety education with SROs and the Beverly Public School Staff, walking school bus with SROs and elementary students, and training additional officers in, uh, advanced roadside impairment detection enforcement. But the difference is, obviously, there's more community involvement and some proactive, uh, measures, as well as the, uh, reactive measures.
Thank you, Captain Russo. Counselors, any questions or comments? Um, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call, Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Lettando?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. Ms. Kent?
Order number 260. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $1,000 donation from Cummings Properties. This donation is made at the recommendation of Michael?
Petkovich.
Thank you. 60 Traft Street, Beverly. It could be used for the area of greater need in the fire department. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires city, both city council and mayor approval for any grant earmark, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting, December 7th, 2020. Thank you, sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Man, I think Deputy Chief, uh, Peter O'Connor is still on the call. Do you want to make a comment on this one? If not, it's okay.
Sorry. Uh, thanks, uh, to the Cummings Center, and, uh, thanks to Mike Petkovich for that generous donation. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Good to see you sticking around. Um, anything from members of the council on this one? Seems fairly simple. I would entertain a motion to, um, accept the donation from Cummings Properties.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Lettando?
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes. Ms. Kent, 261.
261. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $2,654 grant from FM Global Fire Prevention, which is one of the world's largest commercial property insurers. This grant funding will be used by the Beverly Fire Department to purchase photoelectric carbon monoxide detectors. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmark, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for this prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on Monday, December 7th, 2020. Thank you, sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Uh, Deputy Chief, do you want to make a comment on this one? Somebody else giving, uh, money to the fire department?
Ms. Barrett, is Jake here?
Uh, Deputy Chief, I haven't seen Jake Kryling here, but I just wanted to say that I worked very closely with Lieutenant Kryling on this grant, as well as the child passenger safety grants, and, um, and, uh, fire alarm grants as well. And, uh, I, I don't see him on the call, but I just wanted to say thank you to him, because this is a really critical grant that saves lives, uh, for carbon monoxide detectors. So, thank you to him. And I also wanted to mention that I worked very closely with Deputy Chief O'Connor on, uh, grants, and it's a pleasure to work with all the fire department, uh, staff on grants. They're really terrific. So thank you.
Well, you know, it's nice, uh, Ms. Barrett, you have a great relationship with all the department heads and, uh, the people that work in those departments that are in charge of looking for extra money through grants. Uh, you know, you've been very impressive. Like Mayor Cahill said, we've had three, uh, grant directors, and I think, um, while the first two were very good, I think you've taken it to a whole nother level, just by seeing every, every, uh, every meeting, we have more and more grants to accept. Thank you so much. Counselor Flowers has a comment.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. President, if I typed in the chat, I was not meaning to, except I will say thank you to Ms. Barrett and to everybody else who's been involved in getting these grants.
Great. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to accept the grant.
So moved.
Perfect. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Lettando?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. Remember, we have people that are going to speak about filling Counselor Brady's, uh, seat in a little while. We all should be a little more exciting and a little more on top of the game, make sure we show them how, how, how much fun it is, right? Thank you, everybody.
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes. Remember, we have people that are going to speak about filling Counselor Brady's seat in a little while. We all should be a little more exciting and a little more on top of the game. We show them how much fun it is, right? Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Ms. Barrett. That's the last one for you tonight, right?
It is. I just wanted to say thank you to you, Council President, and the mayor, and everyone else for their kind comments. I thought you might be getting sick of seeing me on these meetings, but we have more grants coming at the next City Council meeting, so you'll probably see me again. So thank you very much.
Dynamite. Look forward to it. My daughter made dessert. I had to eat it. Ms. Kent, order 262.
Order 262. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. David Allen St. Pierre, 179 Dodge Street, Beverly, to serve on the Conservation Commission. His term is to be effective until June 30, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer to the Committee on Legal Affairs and my fellow councils. You know that it was David Allen St. Pierre, who is the Concombs rep to the Open Space and Rec Committee. He did a nice job a couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago, talking about the work they've been doing there. So double duty. We sent that to Legal Affairs. So next one.
Order number 263. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. Mark Casey at 16 Chapman Street, Beverly, to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission. His term is to be effective from January 1, 2021, until December 31, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And let's refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order number 264. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. Donald Newman of 26 Washington Street, Beverly, to serve on the Beverly Harbor Management Authority. His term to be effective from January 1, 2021, until December 31, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Now, there's a guy that's really excited that things are going on in the waterfront. Mr. Newman has been on the Harbor Management Authority for, I want to say decades, but great reappointment. So please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order number 265. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. Rodney Sinclair, 15 Devon Avenue, Beverly, to serve on the Planning Board. His term is to be effective from January 1, 2021, until December 31, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 266. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint, subject to your review and recommendation, the following citizens to serve on the Planning Board. Ellen Flannery at 30 Conant Street, Beverly, Wayne Miller, 5 Pasta Road, Beverly, and Zane Kraft, 1 Emily Way, Beverly. This term is to be effective from January 1, 2021, until December 31, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 267. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Ms. Nancy Dillon, 4 Middle Street, Beverly, to serve on the Ways Reduction Committee. Her term is to be effective until March 31, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order number 274. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint, subject to your review and recommendation, the following citizens to serve on the Beverly Airport Commission. Paul Treffrey of 43 Glidden Street, Paul Green of 7 Dartmouth Street, Beverly, Peter Gentel, 47 Middlebury Lane, Beverly, Matthew Moser of 8 Prince Place, Dammers, Town of Dammers of Pointe, and Aaron Henry of Town of Dammers, 17th Street, Dammers. Their terms are to be effective from January 1, 2021, until December 31, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services. I would entertain a motion to accept a late file from Mayor Cahill on order number 276. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers? Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Lucando?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. Ms. Kent, do you want me to read this to give you a break?
Sure. Thank you.
Oh, well, you've had a lot of reading to do, so I don't mind. Dear Honorable City Council, last Friday, the State Legislature passed the final state budget for fiscal year 2021. It now awaits the governor's signature to become complete and approved. Since there is already consensus between the legislature and Governor Baker on the state aid funding levels for municipalities, I therefore ask that you set a public hearing during your meeting this evening, and I respectfully request your approval to raise and appropriate additional funds to be used during fiscal year 2021. This budget has been unprecedented in many regards. We were faced with a level of uncertainty due to the pandemic, and we responded by making responsible budget reductions and passing a budget in June that preserved the city's financial footing and continued to deliver the core services our residents need. Although significant uncertainty still exists regarding the region's financial outlook, Governor Baker and the State Legislature have committed to a local aid package for FY 2021 above the reduced level of the city forecast. The funding represents a level funding of FY 2020 amounts for the key area of unrestricted general government aid and an adjustment upward for Chapter 70 due to an inflationary adjustment and an enrollment increase within the Beverly schools. This is certainly welcome news as our FY 2021 budget made challenging reductions that would have not otherwise have happened. The FY 2021 budget also relied on draws from the city's stabilization account and the city's overlay reserve account to balance. Now, with level funding and state aid, much of the reduced spending levels and reliance on stabilization reserves can be restored to preserve critical services while reserving rainy day funds for future use. In particular, with the planned increase in debt service of close to $1.5 million in FY 2022 to support the final borrowing for our new middle school and the total borrowing for our new police station, as well as anticipated cost increases in our new trash and recycling contract, coupled with planning for potentially significant state aid cuts in FY 2022, it is of critical importance to the community that we restore and preserve our stabilization fund at this time. I have outlined the proposed appropriations in the following summary and look forward to discussing them in an upcoming public hearing. Last, I should note that this additional appropriation does not change the amount of property taxes the city is relying on to fund its FY 2021 budget. When the City Council approved the budget in June, it was predicated on the same level of property tax revenue as will be required from our property owners in this proposed revised budget. We are not asking any more of our taxpayers than we did in June. In fact, as stated above, the one-time nature of much of these appropriation requests will restore budget flexibility and reserves, which will be necessary to reallocate in FY 2022 to maintain service levels and absorb needed cost increase in our debt service and sanitation budgets. Please initiate action on this appropriation request this evening by scheduling a public hearing for your next City Council meeting. Thank you for your ongoing and valued partnership in serving our residences and businesses during this particularly challenging time. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor. I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for Monday, December 21, at 7:15 PM. So moved. Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Lucando?
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes. Communications from other city offices and boards. Ms. Kent, I'm going to wait on order number 268. We'll take that up at the end of our meeting.
Okay.
And we've already taken care of order 269, so I'm going to go to order number 270.
Order number 270 from the City Clerk. This is a music license renewals, and as always, we wait for the police to send us their inspections, and during COVID, it may take a little longer, but we wanted to get it before you so that we can have them approved by the end of the year. But we will issue them unless they're approved by the police.
Would it be your recommendation to vote on these now or wait until the 21st?
Either way, it doesn't make a difference.
All right, so we'll refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Okay.
Order 271?
Order 271 from the City Clerk's office, and this is for the Class 1, 2, 3 motor vehicle license renewals. And again, the same, we have to have all the information from them with their bonds and everything else before we will let them be approved.
Okay, so refer that to Legal Affairs. We'll take that up on the 21st.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion to accept the late file on order number 275 from our Finance Director, Brian Ailes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Lucando?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. You want me to do this one, Ms. Kent?
Sure.
All right. Dear Honorable City Council, I request your approval to use FY 2021 funds toward the payment of prior year unemployment-related costs within the school department. The city received invoices in August for an unprecedented level of unemployment claims covering the period of March 2020 through June 2020. As you know, the city pays its unemployment claims directly. The school department has reviewed the claims and determined that a significant amount were fraudulent claims and has notified the State Department of Unemployment Insurance accordingly. Although the school department issued a PO in FY 2020 to cover a typical level of unemployment claims, the true cost to the City of Beverly this period exceeds the available funds and therefore must be paid by FY 2021 funds to meet this obligation. We expect the net impact to the FY 21 budget for this not to exceed $55,000 and therefore request approval to expense up to that amount to the school department's FY 21 budget. For a Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, the required certifications have been filed with the city auditor. I kindly request your approval to resolve these matters. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Brian Ailes, Finance Director. Mr. Ailes, do you want to comment on this one if you're still around? There you are. Good to see you. We all like.
It's a long evening, I guess. Happy to answer any specific questions. This is a fairly routine request we put before the council in an effort to use funds appropriated for FY 21 purposes for some invoices that dated back to FY 20.
Okay. Counsel Rand has a question. Counsel, let's go to Counsel Feldman first. She beat Counsel Rand to the buzzer.
Thank you. So in your communication, it stated that there were the fraudulent claims that were found. Is the number that you're requesting in terms of to cover the costs associated in fiscal year 20, is that minus the fraudulent claims, basically?
Yeah, so we're trying to pay a gross amount, and we will file, we already have filed the fraudulent activity reports with the Department of Unemployment Insurance, and they will attempt to recoup as much of this as they can. Obviously, we can't guarantee that we're able to recoup it all, but they actually make the payments on behalf of the city and then bill us subsequent to that. So we are effectively on the hook for anything that leaves their office, and we're working very closely with them to try to recoup as much of it as we can. I would expect us to be able to recoup a significant amount of it, but this amount of about $55,000 effectively represents the level of fraudulent claims that were filed.
Thank you.
Counsel Rand?
Thank you. I'm so glad I can just unmute and talk now. That was so stressful earlier. Okay. Quick question. Does this qualify for any, are you counting this in your tally of COVID-19 expenses?
So there are portions of these claims that are COVID-related, and we will account for them accordingly through the various COVID-related funding streams we have outside of the general fund and the taxpayers' Beverly property tax revenues. However, the requested amount is in excess of the COVID-related claims.
Okay. And one follow-up question. President Guanxi? Thank you. So maybe this is a little separate topic, but can we, where do we see those other claims that are being counted as COVID-19 kind of funding, funded expenses specifically related to unemployment?
I guess if you could clarify a little bit more on the question, are you looking for the entire COVID-related expenses that the cities have incurred since the pandemic began or just the costs associated with unemployment that are COVID-related?
Separately, it would be very interesting to see all of the expenses that the city has incurred, but that's a totally different topic. But that does lead me to ask you, just in this specific example, where can we see the, I'm curious about the difference between what COVID-19 is covering for unemployment and what the city is having to cover.
Yep. So typically, for this time period in a given year, we would expect about $25,000 in unemployment claims. We know that we have legitimate about, and by the way, that was the amount that was decided by the school district in a PO because it's a typical year, it's what they would normally expect to pay. When we received the bills, we received that typical amount. We also received in addition to that about $20,000, and I'm rounding here, but it's about $20,000 that was deemed to be COVID-related. So therefore, the city isn't necessarily on the hook for that. It gets charged to a different pool of money coming from the feds through the state to reimburse us for that expense. And then in addition to that are these fraudulent claims, which we need to pay for upfront by December 15, but then we'll recoup over time through the DUI, is the name of the department.
That's great. Thank you. And maybe a future meeting, we could have a presentation about the general COVID-19 expenses. That would be very interesting. Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Counsel Rand. Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Any other questions? Hearing no other questions or comments, I entertain a motion to approve Mr. Ailes' request to pay that bill.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Lucando?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. I would entertain a motion to accept a late file on order number 277 from Counsel Feldman.
So moved. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Lucando?
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes. Deed of any right, title, and interest in the 20-foot strip of land located on Woodland Road by the City of Beverly, Assessor's Parcel ID Number 43-91A. Dear Honorable Council, this letter concerns Assessor's Parcel ID Number 43-91A, 0 Woodland Road, which is a 20 by 166-foot strip of land located on Woodland Road. The 20-foot strip directly abuts property owned by Lori Thompson at 8 Woodland Road. It does not adjourn or lead to any publicly owned land or accepted way. Ms. Thompson is in the process of selling her home at 8 Woodland Road and hopes to be able to close in early December 2020. During this process, she became aware that the paved portions of her driveway encroach on the 20-foot strip. Ms. Thompson's deed suggests that the 20-foot strip is or was formerly owned by the City of Beverly. Ms. Thompson's deed suggests that the 20-foot strip is or was, I just read that again, because I don't do this all the time. Ms. Thompson reached out to the city to ask if the city would convey an easement to allow her driveway to remain. The assessor's office identifies the city as the owner but does not have a deed on file. A review of the documents of record at the Registry of Deeds by the City Solicitor's Office did not yield a record definitively establishing that the city, in fact, owns or has ever owned the 20-foot strip. Ms. Thompson's attorneys also researched the question and did not identify anything establishing with certainty that the title to the 20-foot strip lies with the city. Because the 20-foot strip is of no utility to the city, the city and Ms. Thompson formulated a solution in which the city would deed whatever interest it may have in the 20-foot strip to Ms. Thompson without any guarantees or assurances as to the quality or sufficiency of the title. The proposed deed and agreement is attached here, too. The 20-foot strip is not currently on the city's tax rolls. Upon conveyance, real property taxes for parcel 43-91A will be assessed to the owner of record of 8 Woodland Road and all future owners. I have consulted with the city solicitor, who has approved the deed as legal to form. The mayor's office, the planning department, and the assessor's office have all been consulted and supported the conveyance to Ms. Thompson. In light of the foregoing, I respectfully request that the City Council vote to approve the conveyance of parcel 43-91A to Ms. Thompson and grant the mayor the authority to execute all documents necessary to do so. To add in the review of this matter, a copy of the related Beverly GIS map is attached here, too. The 20-foot strip is highlighted in blue. 8 Woodland Road is parcel 43-92. Sincerely yours, Kathleen Feldman, Ward 5 City Counselor. Ms. Feldman, any comments about this? This is all you.
Um, yes, thank you. And I apologize for the late file with something so kind of big on the face of it. This was an ongoing process, and I learned a lot with this. And I wouldn't have filed it, I wouldn't have done a late file if it wasn't for the fact that this has been a month-long process of research that is the last thing needed for this new homeowner to close on December 14. And I just felt it was in the city's best interest. After speaking extensively with Stephanie Williams, she has advised me that it's to the benefit of the city to enter into this type of agreement. The city does not, the long story short is the city doesn't even think they necessarily own it, and it's not being assessed for property tax-wise. And it will be if we deed it to, if the conveyance is approved by the City Council. So when looking at filing this late or waiting two weeks so people had a chance to review it, I thought the most important part was that the city solicitor's office has advised us that this is in the best interest of the city. So to me, it didn't, I didn't need two more weeks to deliberate about a recommendation such as that. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions on this. I know we have a long meeting, but I know a lot more about 8 Woodland Road than anyone would ever care to know, and this 20-foot strip, I'd never want to hear the words 20-foot strip again, so.
I don't think I want to say it anymore. I think I've said it before. No, great work. The best thing is you said, you know what you said is first-term city council, you learn so much doing it. That's really some work. Is there any questions for Counsel Feldman? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the order and allow the mayor to grant, give the mayor the authority to execute all documents necessary to do so.
This, this president, so moved with my compliments to Counsel Feldman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second?
And a roll call?
Ames?
Yes, well done.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes, nice work. Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number 272, Historic District Commission Certificate of Non-Applicable 20-2.
I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Yes.
Feldman? Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman? Rand?
Yes.
Houseman, yes. Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
Order number 273, The National Grid Notice of Rate-Increased Public Hearings.
Entertained a motion to receive that and place it on file?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman? Rand?
Yes.
Houseman, yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
In me?
And Guanxi, sorry about you.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm very forgettable, I get it. And if anybody watching at home or tuning in on their computer, if they want to know when or where the rate-increased public hearings are from National Grid, they will be on file in the city clerk's office. A simple phone call and Ms. Kent can give you that information. Or Ms. Dixon, I forgot to recognize that our Assistant City Clerk, Christine Dixon, has been here the whole evening also. Thank you. Motion?
Also, it's on the city website as well.
Oh, good, it's on the city website, dynamite. motions and orders.
Order number 239. Be attained that the city council of the City of Beverly, Chapter 270 Handicap Parking Sign, Section 270-49 Off-Street Handicap Parking, amending Section 270-49 as follows. Add the handicap parking sign to 20th November and handicap sign to 20th November Street. The first reading went on November 23rd, it was published on November 27th, so it could be final passage to tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the amended ordinance.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanxi?
Yes. Counsel Rotundo is going to recuse himself for orders number 247 and 248. Ms. Kent, 247?
Yep, number 247. Chapter 1, Proposed Order Amending Beverly Ordinance in Section 113-2, possession or consumption of alcohol on public ways and public places or in private property by amending C as set forth below. 113-2, possession or consumption on public ways and public places or on private property. C, notwithstanding paragraph A, Beverly restaurants may be allowed to operate and serve alcohol on city sidewalks, in parklets, parking spaces, public ways, or other public space, but only upon approval by the Health Department. Municipal Inspection Department, Planning Department, and Public Safety in accordance with standards established by the Planning Department. Any such use is further subject to review and approval by the Licensing Board, including conditions imposed by such Board. This paragraph C shall sunset and be no further force in effect as of 60 days past the end of the Governor's Declaration of Emergency dated March 10, 2020. This also was first read on November 23rd and, in the paper on November 27th, and today is the final passage.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Any questions or comments? I entertain a motion to approve the amended ordinance.
Second?
And a roll call?
Ames? Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty? Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo? Oh.
Oh, he's not.
Guanxi, yes.
Yes. 248.
Order number 248, Proposed Order Amending Beverly Ordinance, Section 192-61 Sandwich Board Signs by amending paragraph E as set forth below. Notwithstanding paragraphs A and D, sandwich board signs may be displayed without a permit issued by the city council but only upon approval by the municipal inspections and planning departments in accordance with standards established by the planning department. This paragraph E shall sunset and be no further force in effect as of 60 days past the end of the Governor's Declaration of Emergency dated March 10, 2020. This was first read on November 23rd, and it was in the newspaper on November 27th, and this is the final passage as well.
And questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the amended ordinance.
So moved.
Second?
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty? Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. Counselor Ames, I love seeing that Beverly High School football jacket in the background there. Good to see he still wears it.
I love it when it comes out of the closet.
Yeah.
Like that, yep.
Um, okay. All we have left now on our agenda is order number 268. Is everybody good, or do you want to take a five-minute recess?
I have a question, reports from committee or?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about reports from committee, sorry about that.
Yep.
Reports from committees.
Okay, so order number 238, Communication from the City Clerk Renewal of Lodging House Inspections. And Christine Dixon did let me know today that the inspections are completed except for the gray crop and the YMCA because those are vacant right now.
Okay, because they were under construction, right.
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Abstain.
No, 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 we're by that.
I know, but I don't even know what you ordered, I just got on the call.
Lodging house licenses.
Oh, okay, yes.
Report from committee. Yes? And Guanxi?
Yes.
Okay, reports from Public Services, order number 250, Communications from the Mayor for the appointment for Mr. Matthew Bellotti to serve on the KTV Advisory Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
Order number 251, Communication from the Mayor, Cahill for reappointments for Rachel Poor, Carolyn Beard-Mason, and Ellen Flannery to serve on the Design Review Board.
And questions or comments? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
And a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Yes.
Flaherty? Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
And order number 252, Communication from the Mayor for reappointment of Jerry Delvey to serve on the Veterans Advisory Committee and reappointment and waive of residency requirements for Mr. Ron Genest.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointments.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
And finally, order number 254, Communication from the Mayor to appoint Mr. Peter O'Connor to serve as chief of the Beverly Flight Department.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Mayor Cahill's appointment.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chief O'Connor. I wish I was there to give you a big hug, but you know the rules.
Thank you very much, I really truly appreciate it.
And you know this city council is here to help you out in any way we can.
Likewise, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on, help me out, Ms. Kent, last. Yeah, is everybody good? Do we want to take a little break?
I'm good.
All right, everybody's good? That's great. All right. My letter to the council, dear honorable city council, please review the attached letters of interest resumes for candidates looking to fill the seat of Ward 6 City Councilor John Frady's, which will be vacated on December 31st, 2020. We'll introduce the candidates at the upcoming December 7, 2020 meeting. Each candidate will be able to speak for three minutes to introduce themselves to the council, and then the council will take a vote on December 21st, 2020 at our final meeting of the year, hopefully. So I just have to say that I appreciate everybody's patience. Hopefully, we didn't scare anybody off by tonight's meeting, because this was a tough one. But I really appreciate your patience and your willingness to be here. Before we go to, we'll go in alphabetical order. Counsel Frady's would like to make a comment, and then I think these guys will off.
Oh, thanks so much, Counsel President. You know, first and foremost, I want to thank all the well-wishers. You saw tonight in the debate that the compensation is not the reason, it's the fulfillment, it's the gratification. And for the constituents to reach out and thank me for the service, which has been my pleasure. But it's so ironic that over 30 years ago, I was in the exact same position that all the rest of these candidates were in when there was a selection process that went on. And that night, I think, went till almost 2:00 in the morning. So this is trending towards it, so I hope, I'll just keep it brief. The great news is the depth and the quality of the candidates who are looking to fill this seat. I think it's wonderful for our municipal form of government. I think it's great for the City of Beverly, but it's even better news for Ward 6. I'm going to accept the findings of the city charter, unlike the current resident at 1600 Pennsylvania Ave. I really appreciated serving with all of you, as I've said before. So if, if my future political career is anything like my past, I'll see you all in 30 years from now. So anyway, thank you. I just wish everybody good luck tonight. And for those of you voting, please keep in mind the best interests of the Ward 6 position. So good luck tonight to all the candidates. I'm going to recuse myself. I think it would be in the best interest for the candidates as well as myself. So best of luck all. Take it easy.
President, you're on mute.
Sorry, Julia was back on the piano. All right, let's start with Mr. Derek Beckwith. Mr. Beckwith?
So I have three minutes, is that it now?
So. Give her, sure.
So we'll, I'll do it, I have it timed out at 2:59, so we'll see how that goes. First of all, I would like to thank you, council presidents, councilors, and I'd also like to thank Counsel Frady's for his service to Ward 6 over these years, and, and his well wishes to all of us, and hopefully it won't be 25 ballots on the 21st when you next meet. You know, as a group, each of the candidates that you're talking to tonight loves our city, and each believes that they would be the best to represent Ward 6. So it's, you know, a difficult situation with 10 people running to really do a differentiation in three minutes, but I'm going to do my best. First of all, so, so why do I think I'm the best choice for you as you look to who to have as the interim counselor for Ward 6 and to represent the people from Centerville and Beverly Farms and Pride's Crossing? I believe it's because of the experience I have, and because even though I have that experience, I'm also a fresh face. I, I know Beverly, I've lived here for a total of eight years, seven of them as a renter, so I understand that. When I had small children in elementary school, so I understand our education system. I also, for the last 11 years, have lived on Hale Street and Pride's Crossing as a homeowner and as a taxpayer. So I understand the situation of being a taxpayer in Ward 6. And I also know how government works. At the state level, I have worked as the Assistant to the Secretary of Economic Affairs, I've worked as a legislative liaison to the Lieutenant Governor of the State of Massachusetts. I, at the county level, have worked as a district court administrator for District Attorney Kevin Burke. Many of you know Kevin and his service to our city. And at the local level, about two years ago, I reinjected myself and really wanted to make a difference and have been fortunate enough to be on the planning board and the CPC to make a difference. And I've dealt in those situations with a lot of issues, planning, recreation, historic preservation, housing.[1729.22] Additionally, I've also run workshops for mayors and city councils from throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I understand from that perspective in training them and talking to them many of the issues and what it's like certainly to be a councilor. I know business. I've been an executive for 20 years. 10 of those years, I've owned my own business, and I know as a small business owner what it's like and many of the struggles that my clients and my business have been going through during this COVID time. I also understand how education works. I was on the faculty of Emerson College for eight years, and before that, I taught adult education. I, my style is to listen and to collaborate and to help solve problems, and that's what I want to bring to bear as a counselor for Ward Six. I believe in local government. It's the, the most important touch point that all of our citizens have, really, when you stop and think about it. This is where they come for all of their services, from the minute you walk out the door to the minute you come back home. It's, it's really about local government, helping to make a difference in people's lives. So one of the things I am very, very excited about is the opportunity to work on constituent services and to, there'll be no problem too small to help residents solve the problems and understand city government. I really want to be involved in that and do that. And I pledge to make that a priority. I have a lot of big picture ideas, education and bringing new businesses to our city, housing availability and affordability. Worked on many of these issues, but in this time of COVID, I really see that the priorities from the perspective of, of what I can do to help make a difference for Ward Six is, it rests with a, a different set of issues. Making sure our schools and teachers have the resources they need, helping families that are impacted by COVID. That's why when I was on the subcommittee and the CPC, we created the Emergency Rental Assistance Fund, which is up and active now to help people who lost income due to COVID pay their rent and stay in their homes. I want to do whatever we can to help businesses who are struggling maintain and survive. I want to work extremely hard to fight the MBTA draconian cuts that are being proposed for the, for the city of Beverly. And I also want to work on the budget issues, because this year, as we heard earlier, is nothing like what we're going to face next year. I've been around the block, but I'm also fairly new to Beverly government. And, you know, I may not have been elected to office in Beverly yet, but I'll leave you with this thought, that I am just like each and every one of you before you won your first election. Fully committed, ready to make a difference, and dedicated to Beverly's future. I don't need to be elected to office to share that with you, and I look forward to the opportunity to be the city counselor in Ward Six, but I also pledge to run for election, to run for election, to run for the seat if I am appointed. And I'd be honored to have your vote and support for this position. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beckwith. Let's go to James Carnaza. James was here. James, you still here? All right, well.
I can see him, Mr. President. I think his audio is not working.
He's raised a hand, yes. James, you're ready? How do I do that? We don't do the raise a hand. I'm having technical difficulties. Anybody can help me out, that would be great.
I think he has his auto issues. So he's raising his hand, saying he is here, but he can't talk right now because his audio is not working.
Okay.
Maybe skip.
Maybe his kids ruined his headphones, too.
I mean, in an effort to say, well, hopefully we hear from him eventually. James, if you can hear me and you're having problems with your audio, you can, you can always call in. There is information there on the login. If you can get to that, let us know. But I'm going to move on to the next person, but we're not going to go anywhere without hearing from you also. So while Mr. Carnaza is figuring his situation out, we'll go to Mr. Ralph Calentino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the city council, and especially a big thank you to Mr. Frady's, who unfortunately isn't here to hear this, but we're all sad to see him go in Ward Six, and he means the world to, to many of us. So thank you for having me here. My name is Ralph Calentino, and I've been a Beverly resident my entire extended 25-year-old life. I have been involved in many aspects of our community, from playing sports to umpiring to being a lecturer at St. Margaret's Church. One of the things that I'm most proud of in Beverly is my opportunity to be able to write and give speeches at many of our memorial and Veterans Day ceremonies. Through this, I've been able to honor many of the heroes of our city, and some of the speeches, like in particular, the, the speech about Mr. Fiore, still, still really weighs on me even today. I'm currently a JD MBA student in my final year of law in business school at Boston University. I was given some absolutely insane advice from a former boss to do both degrees at once, and I think I'm doing fairly well in it so far, but finals are coming this week, so we shall see. I'm hoping schedule permitting and coronavirus, of course, permitting in the fall semester of 2020 to begin a master's in public policy degree at the Harvard Kennedy School of, of government. With my experience, having worked in the offices of Governor Charlie Baker, Congressman Moulton, and working for former Governor Dukakis, who gave me the excellent advice about the JD MBA, I've been drawn to public service, and I hope to be able to serve this great city, as so many have done before me and so many will do after. I hope to be able to further make heard the voices of those who have not been able to be heard traditionally, and to serve further the residents of Ward Six. I hope that I'll have the opportunity to complete the term of Counselor Frady's, who, again, I just have all the respect in the world for, and none of us will ever say a bad thing about him. I believe it's time for my generation to begin shouldering the burden of public service, even as frightening as that is, I'm sure, to men like Counselor Flaherty, who has children my age. I believe and I hope to have the opportunity to demonstrate that I can be an asset to this council and to the city that we all love so much, and in the, for the sake of time, I will leave it there. Thank you.
I'm mute.
Sorry about that. Let's go to Dominic Copeland, next on my list. Mr. Copeland, nice to see you.
All right, nice to be seen. Thank you, Council President. Can everyone hear me?
All good?
All right, perfect. Thank you, Council President, councilors, and John Frady, who's not here. I thank him for his service and for Ward Six. It's been greatly appreciated. And most importantly, look, I appreciate everyone and respect them who stands up to make a difference. So seeing everyone here involved does my heart joy and note, and I know that the future of Beverly is in great hands, no matter what happens from here on out. So I thank you, everyone, for all your devoted service, and thank you for everyone that's looking to step up and be the next counselor for Ward Six. But also, having said this, I also understand that no one on the council or seeking to be on the council has ever had to lead through a pandemic and a recession like we have currently right now. This is new territory for everyone, and the city will need diverse, innovative voices reflecting every part of our city to help us through these tough times, tough unprecedented times. What we face today is unlike anything we faced previously as a city and as members of Ward Six. Now, I will never forget, it was over 12 years ago, we were looking to move from Middleton and find a great community to live in, to raise a family, to, to have great and amazing friends. One day, I brought my family to Beverly where I worked in international cells, so that we could walk around and get a sense of the city. We ran into someone that I lovingly call an old timer. That's someone that's lived in Beverly their entire life, that was at retirement age. He's walking around, and I ask him, you know, can you tell me about Beverly? You know, we're thinking about moving here. He looked at me and said, well, Beverly's a place where if you're born here, you die here, and if you move here, you stay here. His statement, it was all I needed to know about the, the heart and the, and the community that is Beverly. And that, gentlemen, he did not look at the color of my skin nor the differences of my family. He just spoke from his heart. And I want to assure that through my service, that one day, I as an old timer can say the same for those seeking a great community and a home here in Beverly, and especially in Ward Six. My friends, a vote for me is not just assigning an open council seat. It's not even about a vote for me. It's an understanding of a task that lies ahead, to form a more perfect city government and leadership that is of the people, for the people, and by the people. We need new solu- solutions for education. New solutions of how we're going to raise these revenues. We're facing a $2 million deficit. What are we going to do about that? We can sit back and let it happen, or know what we can charge forward, work together and do something about it. And I, for one, am all about working together, getting my hands dirty, and let's do something about it, because I know that we can. From social challenges and climate change, all these are things that I strongly believe in, and I know that I can make a difference in, because I have before. And contrary to some beliefs, my friends, I have full confidence and belief in knowing that the great people of Ward Six that have given a vote today would vote for me, just as they voted for your parents, your grandparents, and for you. As I speak here today, my story is your story. It's the story of your parents and their parents who came to Beverly with a dream that their hard work and their efforts could pave a way for you to be where you stand today. Think of what they stood for, because, my friends, that's what I stand for, too. That hard work, that dedication, that dream, that ability to make a difference. Whether one of the original settlers of Beverly, whether you were Jewish, whether they were Irish or Italian, a woman or anything else, those who came before you understood, just as I do now, that the only way to secure a better future for you was for them to step up, to get involved, and do the hard work, understanding that their diversity was necessary to accurately reflect the needs of their wards and Beverly as a whole. My friends, you are their dream. The city today is what they dreamed of and what they worked hard for, and I want to do the same for the future of Beverly, for my children, for your children as well. And that, my friends, is why I'm working to be your Ward Six counselor. I thank you for your time, your appreciation, and hopefully one day I can sit there and join you, too, and make a great difference for our city. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. No stranger to most of us, Mr. Paul Lanzikos. Mr. Lanzikos?
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors. I also extend my appreciation to Council Afraidies, who has well represented all of us in Ward Six these past years. I recognize and appreciate that there are a number of highly qualified and motivated individuals seeking appointment to this open seat. I'm presenting my interests and qualifications in the event that the council is interested in pointing someone for the, only for the balance of the unexpired term and not to stand for election in November. If this is an attractive option, then I'll be submitting presenting my qualifications and experience. My wife Suzanne and I have been residents and homeowners in Beverly for 35 years, and along with my children who came to us in 1995, we've resided on High Street in Ward Six, and both my children have been students in Beverly Public Schools, and I think are well-known to many of you. Through my professional civic charitable and political activities, I've been actively engaged in activities to enhance the, the life here in Beverly and throughout the region and state. My, my cricum vitae contains all my professional experiences over the past close to 50 years, but I think of particular relevance this evening of my five years of experience as a senior manager at Beverly Hospital, my 15 years as the Executive Director of National Services in Damage, which is similar to Senior Care, which serves older residents here in Beverly, as well as my four years as Cabinet Secretary in, as, in the Executive Office of Other Affairs under Michael Astacacus. Some relevant highlights of my civic and charitable activities, including my current service on the Beverly Human Rights Committee since its inception, my initial service as the president, initial president of Homile Community Partners, and is one of the co-founders, initial president of Hospice of Nausio, which is now known as Care Dimensions. I have experienced as a member of a deliberative council for 12 and a half years, ending last year. I served as a member of the Public Health Council, which I, and I think that's a particularly relevant experience in the light of COVID-19. I've, I've interacted in varying degrees with all of you, members of the council, so I, I know you, and I think most of you know me well. I also have interacted very closely with the current mayor and previous mayors, as well as the state representatives and state senators. So I know my way around local and state government. I stay abreast of issues at the municipal, state, regional, and national levels, and I'm actively involved in a number of areas. Currently, I'm particularly focused in promoting affordable, accessible housing, addressing racial disparities, particularly through my work in the Beverly Human Rights Committee, also supporting the independence of persons with intellectual limitations for maximum independence. And currently, I'm very active as a founder and coordinator of a statewide advocacy group called Dignity Alliance Massachusetts, which seeks to transform long-term services of support and care for older adults and people with disabilities in facilities, as well as in home and community-based settings throughout the state. I do have the, the time, the energy, and capacity to perform all these expected duties as an active participating member of the Beverly City Council, representing Ward Six, particularly during the forthcoming year. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lanzikos. James Carnaza, you're able to get on? I just sent him a text message. I hope we didn't scare him away. Let's go on to our next, our next person, Medley Long.
Mr. President, I wanted you to know that Mr. Carnaza is here. I think he's still having audio issues.
Okay.
I'm, I'm on, I'm on the phone as well, so I think we'll just do that.
Oh, good. So, Mr. Long, why don't we wait on you, and we'll go back to James. James?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. So first, good evening to the city of Beverly, Council President, Mayor Cahill, city council members. I thank you for your time tonight and dedication to service for the city and its residents. Thank you also to Counselor Afraidies for his service, his long service. So my name is James Carnaza, also known as Jimmy, and I live here in Centerville with my family of five, my, my wife, seven-year-old son, three-year-old daughter, and a newly-acquired puppy. It has been a long journey to get to this point, this most fortunate point in my life, which most certainly required dedication and perseverance and continuous hard work. We most thankfully find ourselves in this great city we have come to love. I am a Salem State University alumni in 2009, where I served on the Salem State Student Government Association for two consecutive years. Since 2010, I engaged in educating Beverly residents via the Beverly Farmers Market and other community venues on the benefits of adopting organic land care practices to ultimately reduce the use of pesticides and thus create a healthier and more safer place for Beverly residents to live. In August 2012, I took these efforts of promoting organic land care, coupled with my passion to support people of all different abilities, and founded a nonprofit organization called Full Circle Earth. Establishing this organization and working towards accomplishing its mission has been one of my main community services over the last eight years. I am an avid advocate for the earth and its people. Full Circle Earth has received state community citations in our work with the Toxic Use Reduction Institute of UMass Lowell, and partner, and we partner with a number of organizations, including the Northeast Organic Farming Association, E-Mark, Camunitas, and most recently, the Garden School of Beverly. From about 2010 to 2012, I did serve on the Solid Waste Management Committee of Beverly. As renters at that time, my wife and I did have to move out of the city to, to a more affordable option from, for about a year or so. So I did resign from that role. We did come back to Beverly in 2014 as renters, and I continued to work full-time, a full-time job plus two additional part-time jobs, including like an overnight job, to compensate for my wife to be able to stay home and care for our son, who was turning two at the time. But the stars did align, you know, in October 2015, so about five years ago, where we did find, thankfully found a home in Centerville, Beverly. And I'm so grateful and thankful for being able to call this our home and to grow our family here in Beverly. So I'm also, at that point, I also began attending UMass Boston, and I am a UMB alumni, where I earned a master's in rehabilitation counseling in 2017. I traveled many late afternoons to UMass Boston from Beverly train station after my day job as a special education teacher. This effort has led me to obtaining my current employment as a qualified vocational rehabilitation counselor within the Massachusetts Rehabilitation Commission, MRC, and that's a state agency within EOAAPHS. I love this job, where I work with a variety of people day to day to overcome challenges and to help them achieve their employment goals. So we continue to grow as a family and welcomed our beautiful daughter in 2017. So we continue to grow as a family and welcomed our beautiful daughter in 2017. I'm at a point now in my life where I do feel like I can begin to take on a more active involvement within my community. For example, I did serve as a Beverly Little League T-ball coach in 2019, and recently began serving on the Beverly Boys Scale to Pac 49 Committee. This effort, this whole effort in applying for the Ward Six City Council interim position has also sparked my motivation to explore city committees again and to look for vacant positions to see where I can best serve the city of Beverly, which I do love. So at this time, this opportunity to apply for the Ward Six City Council interim position is an ideal adventure to embark upon, due to my passion and readiness to serve the citizens of Beverly, to serve on multiple committees and the city, to serve on the city council, to collaborate with all of you, and with all the different stakeholders, and above all, to respect all people. I would listen to all, offer creative solutions and fiscal responsibility, and as evident in my life, I would work hard day and night and seek to prove, as you all do on a daily basis, that democracy can work for us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carnazza. Much appreciated. And we already know you must have patience if you're a Little League, I mean, a T-ball coach, because there's nothing worse in the world than T-ball. Let's go to Medley Long now. Mr. Long.
Thank you, President Quincy and members of the council. I see many familiar faces. I've worked with many of you over the years on different occasions. As you've all seen my letter of interest, you know that I have many years of community involvement and experience working on various committees throughout the city, whether it be a nonprofit organization in the role as President of Beverly Homecoming, or a member of the COVID-19 Emergency Business Support Task Force, or the financial, the Finance and Facilities Committee for the Beverly Public School Committee. I think I've shown a dedication to the city. I'm a very involved member with Ward Six as the Media Director for the Beverly Farms Improvement Society. I'm the new incoming Vice President for the Fourth of July Committee, Prides, Farms Prides Fourth of July Committee, which I know we are looking to see change come out of, and I'm hoping that we can work together with me on the council, as a member of the committee, and kind of bridge the gap between the two organizations. You know, like everyone else has said, no one does this, as we've heard from the discussion earlier today, no one's doing this for the money, no one's doing this for themselves, but just a pure love for the city of Beverly. And I think, you know, I would be here to represent the mission that we're working towards as a city. In this case, I would be representing the residents of Ward Six, Beverly Farms, Centerville, and Prides Crossing, but my, my thought process would always be what would be best for the residents of Ward Six, is it affects the city as a whole. You know, a little bit about me professionally, I've been a business owner in Beverly for the past 10 years. I had a small marketing office downtown Beverly Farms, and I taught at North Shore Community College in their web design program for a while, and I do whatever I can to, to serve the city of Beverly. So I thank you for, you know, let me tell a little bit about myself, and I hope that you will consider the record I have and appoint me to serve Ward Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Always nice to see you. Mr. Dane Posky. Mr. Posky.
Yes. Hi, everybody. My name is Dane Pesky. I, first of all, wanted to just thank Counselor Freites for his years of service. He's an amazing guy, and Beverly's lucky to have him and his family and, and to do all the wonderful things that they've done. I also want to thank everybody on this call, because if more people in the city saw what you do day in and day out, I think there'd be a much higher appreciation for just how tough this job really is. And I also, just lastly, I was, I was amazed at the number of people that applied for this, and also the quality of people that applied for it. You know, if, if, if this is what Ward Six has to offer, we have a lot to give back to the city. So I hope all of us who, you know, don't end up in this role, I hope all of us take these, this enthusiasm and we put it to good use to help our city and to make it a better place. So just a little bit about me, I'm not from here. Unlike most of you all, I grew up in the Midwest. We, we've moved, my wife and I have moved seven times since we've been together, and, you know, we have a choice, and we chose Beverly 25 years ago, and we've been in Ward Six for 25 years. My wife Anne, if you don't know her, she is a, she is a Beverly school nurse at Ayers Rileside. She's also a COVID contact tracer. So it's been a really tough year at my house with everything that's been going on, and my four kids are grown up now and they've moved away. So it's been, also been a very lonely time for us, and I think a lonely time for a lot of the, a lot of the citizens in Beverly. You have my professional resume, so you know, I've been, I've done 30 years with big companies like Gillette, Procter &amp; Gamble, IBM. I've traveled the globe. I've worked in just about every part of the world there is. But what's more important for all of you is my involvement in the city. I've been actively involved in the city for 25-plus years, doing things like YMCA, Beverly Bootstrap, Harbor Lake Community Partners, North Shore CDC, and I've probably coached every Beverly youth sports team that there's been over about a 12-year period. And so I, I got to know Beverly, and I got to know the people of Beverly through my involvement in all those different organizations. I'm passionate about social justice. I'm passionate about diversity and inclusion. I'm passionate about really database decision-making, and I'm also really just overwhelmed with this, the transformation that our society is taking on right now. And, you know, the world has changed. 9/11 is the next generation's, I'm sorry, COVID is the 9/11 of the next generation. This is a time in a place that we're going to look back to in history and say, I remember when this happened. And, and I think we have some big choices to make, not only in Ward Six, but as, as a town, because of that. We need to listen to our citizens. We need to look at the trends, and we need to really collaborate to make great decisions going forward. And, and that's a big change from what we've all been used to, especially on the national level. I think the amount of information that people have available to them and the speed in which we have to make decisions has never been greater. And I really want, and I really want to help all of you and all of us who live here in Beverly develop what the next 10 years are going to be like, not the next two years, because the next two years are going to be really tough. But what are we going to look like 10 years from now? Because the decisions we make over the next two years are going to impact the city for the next 10 years. And I think there's a couple key things we have to really focus on. One of them is, you know, what, what is our, how are we going to protect our local businesses? Not just to have them survive, but to allow them to thrive. What can we do as a city? From a, from a public school standpoint, how do we help Dr. Chirocek and all the great educators out there with this challenge around remote learning? I mean, people are disappearing from, from some of these programs, and it's going to impact us for many, many years to come. How, how are we going to distribute the vaccine for COVID? Are we going to use the schools? Are we going to use the public health department? What's the plan to help us do all that? So that's just from a COVID standpoint. I think from a downtown standpoint, what's our next 10-year plan with downtown Beverly? They've done a great job over the last 20 years to kind of build Beverly in pieces, and I think we need to really rethink that if we want to make Beverly a great place to live. I also think we need to rapidly expand our affordable housing for families and for seniors. Otherwise, there's not going to be a place for people like me and people and a lot of other people in Beverly. Where are they going to live as we go forward? And I think we need to spread that out instead of focusing it on just one, one ward. I think we need to really have a plan that says, how does everyone in Beverly kind of share some of these, some of these things? And I also think we need to make Beverly a destination. When you tell Beverly, or when you tell people you're from Beverly and they're not from Boston, they'll say, where is Beverly? And I think we should make Beverly a destination and as a way to stimulate the economy, to help our businesses thrive. And I think there's a lot of ways to do that. The last thing is, I think we need to improve our diversity and, and value inclusion. And I, and I don't know that we're there yet, and I think we have to make a conscientious effort to do that, or we're never going to get there, and it's going to become a really important part of our future. And then I think we need to work with our neighboring communities on some of the bigger issues. You know, things like the MBTA, slowing down service or reducing service, things like traffic, and things like climate change, those are, those are issues that Beverly alone can take on. Those are issues that have to be taken on as a North Shore, and we need to find ways to work closer together with everybody. At the end of the day, why am I excited about this? Yes, of course, I want to help my fellow Ward Six families and make this a better place, but I want Beverly to be not just the best place to live in Massachusetts, I want it to be the best small town in America. And that's the reason why I'm, I'm, I signed up for this opportunity and would love that, love a chance to work with you more closely.
Thank you, Mr. Freites. Kent Sinclair. Mr. Sinclair.
Yes. Hi. Can you hear me all right?
We got you. Thank you, Mr. Sinclair.
Well, Mr. President, councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and of course, thank you to Counselor Freites for his many years of distinguished service. And, and thank you to everyone for working so late to hear from me and the other candidates for this appointment. I'm going to use my time tonight to talk to you a little bit about, give you a little more depth maybe about what's motivating me to seek this appointment, and then I'll try to use the remaining time to talk a little bit about my, my skill sets that I think allow me to, will allow me to do a good job working with you as a counselor from Ward Six. So this summer, my wife and I walked every street in the city of Beverly. We did it as a project to spend some time together, but also to find a different way to get to know our city. And from that experience, I became even more connected to our community. Our community is experiencing some difficult times right now. Our city that pre-COVID already had a full plate on its agenda, dealing with really important issues. And now it's being asked to take on even more, and to do so in an environment of increased More importantly, many residents in Ward Six and the rest of the city are facing really difficult times, really difficult, personally, medically, financially, worried about issues of food security, worried about whether or not their children are safe going to school. These are hard issues. And our businesses in Beverly, many of them are also struggling. Their backs are really against the wall trying to survive. I seek this appointment because I want to help get our city through this difficult time, the whole city, Ward Six included, and to do so in a way that will strengthen our community. Now, what do I mean by that? Well, a second motivator for me to seek this appointment is that I believe that local government has an opportunity to model how government should work at every level. When I first got out of law school in 1990, I spent almost half a decade working in Eastern Europe on the transition from communism to democracy. And I know from that experience that for democracy to thrive, that means our communities will thrive. And for our communities and democracy to thrive, people need to know that their government is working for them. They need to know that their local government, which as Derek pointed out, is where, where people are touched the most by government. They need to know that that government is accessible to them. Right? And in there lies the opportunity of being a ward counselor, right, being from Ward Six. It's the opportunity of constituent services of helping the residents of Ward Six and anyone else in this city who needs my help to get answers, to access the local government, to help find solutions, to be their advocate in that process, just like we saw tonight with, you know, what was going on on Woodland Road, right? That makes a big difference to the person who, the, the people who are trying to sell that house. Government worked for them, whether it's trying to find out about the sort of, you know, concerns about a vermin infestation growing out in the cove, or getting trashcans back into our many public parks. To the people who are concerned about that, that's really important, and that interaction they have with their local government makes a difference. And the, and the result of that is if it's a positive experience, if they feel that the process worked, even if they didn't get the solution they're looking for, is that it increases the likelihood that they're going to see government as a positive force in their lives, and it increases the likelihood that they're going to become more civically engaged. And so we have an opportunity now, as we're dealing with these challenging times, to use it as an example. And I look forward, if I'm selected for this position, of working with all of you and with the mayor and, and the rest of the, the people in the city, to increase even further the great job that's already being done on civic engagement. Now, a few words about myself and my skill set. I'm a lawyer, I'm an arbitrator, and I'm a cybersecurity professional. The last five years, I've operated my own law firm here in Beverly after some time in business, and then many years at, at some big law firms, including in Boston. Now, the skills that I have from my professional life involve managing risk, prioritizing competing interests, right? Things that I think could be useful now, but more importantly, maybe it's not just me professionally, but who I am as a person. I work hard, I show up prepared, and I show up prepared to listen, understanding that I do not have a monopoly on the right answer, that you achieve results by working with the divert, people with a diverse set of views and backgrounds, and rolling up your sleeve to try to reach consensus. And that's what people need to see in their local government, and that they do see, if they had been on this call tonight, they would have seen that in action. So that's how you, and that's how I go about solving problems, finding solutions, and getting stuff done. If I'm appointed, I will run for reelection. I believe I should be, expect to be held accountable by the voters of Ward Six. And I, I look forward to the opportunity to serve with you and to be a public servant for the people of Ward Six. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sinclair. Last, but certainly not least, we have Matt St. Hilaire. I know John Timmlio was on our list, but he bowed out, so we'll finish up with Matt St. Hilaire. Mr. Timmlio has his hand up.
I was asking, Mr. President, if I'd be allowed to speak even though I am withdrawing.
In your, to speak about the process? You're not to speak about a specific candidate, are you?
To speak about a candidate other than myself.
No, not this evening. Tonight is for testimony before the council.
Okay.
And Counselor, Matt St. Hilaire is having audio issues. He's calling in now, so we'll look forward to his phone call. Everybody's been great so far. You're not making it easy on us. I'm sure that my seven other colleagues that are in this decision-making process with me would agree. me would agree. Ms. Kent, you'll keep an eye out for Mr. St. Hilaire? And our next meeting will be 12/21. I can tell you now, tomorrow I will be reaching out to this city solicitor to get some ideas about how effectively and smoothly we can put some type of voting process together before December 21st meeting. I'm taking Counselor Hausman's advice about trying to figure that out as soon as possible. We may decide to have an executive session meeting, special meeting, within the next week or so, just to keep everybody updated. We'll update everybody through the city clerk.
We also have the joint meeting with the school committee.
We do have the joint meeting.
President, can you hear me? Mr. St. Hilaire.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Good evening, councilors. Thank you for your hard work and for your service. I want to point out tonight three areas that I believe separate my candidacy from the others before you. First is experience. I served as a city councillor at large for two terms, during which I served on the Finance and Property Subcommittee and chaired the Legal Affairs Subcommittee. I participated in three, sorry, four budget cycles and I am familiar with the city charter and its ordinances. I've also served as a senior aide to Governor Charlie Baker in the governor's office and as part of his political team. I have a deep understanding of how government works in a vast network of contacts that enable me to get things done for residents and for our city. Currently, I lead the human resources function of a large public agency of more than 6,400 employees. I'm working on difficult issues every day, including the impacts of COVID-19 on our workforce, the resulting economic crisis that has left us with a considerable budget deficit, and pressing issues related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Secondly, I have a proven track record. During my time on the city council, I never missed a meeting and was responsive to constituent concerns. I supported Beverly's families by fighting to eliminate the full-day kindergarten fee and for smaller class sizes in our schools, and I supported the funding of our new middle school. I advocated for Beverly's taxpayers by opposing the city's practice of assuming a maximum property tax increase every year, and I supported the creation and buildup of the city's first stabilization fund, which is going to come in handy this year. You will soon be facing difficult budgetary decisions and the residents of Ward Six contribute more in property taxes than any other part of Beverly. They deserve a city councillor who is well-positioned to represent them in the budget process. I worked hard as a city councillor and always did my homework. I was well-prepared for every decision, big or small, and I evaluated issues based on their merits. I wasn't afraid of standing up for those in need or of political pressure as demonstrated by my work with councilors Rand and Hausman to advocate for Beverly's homeless. I conducted citizen surveys and communicated with constituents through social media and regular newsletters. It is often said that, that past performance is the best indicator of future success. You can be confident that I'm up for this job. Thirdly, I'm the only candidate who can claim broad, demonstrated support from the residents of Ward Six. My name appeared on the ballot three times as a candidate for city councillor at large and I received overwhelming support from the voters of Ward Six each time. Even in my last campaign in 2017, I raised, I raised that future six candidates, including the three current at-large councillors, in which I finished in fourth place citywide, I earned more votes than any other candidate in Ward Six Precinct One, and I finished in second place to President Guanci in Ward Six Precinct Two. I've earned the trust and support of the residents of Ward Six. I have a proven track record of supporting Beverly's families, schools, and taxpayers and of doing the hard work required as a city councillor. And I have experience serving in the job and working on the most important issues facing our city. In these difficult times, I believe I am the most qualified to step in to replace Counselor Freydees and best serve the residents of Beverly Farms, Centerville, and Prides Crossing over the next year. I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinclair. And thank you to everybody that spoke tonight. We'll keep you informed of the process through the city clerk's office and then she'll, whenever she communicates with you, she'll always CC members of the council. And, you know, we wish you the best of luck. Like I just said a few minutes ago, you, you definitely have not made our job easy, that's for sure. We have nine people that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine people that are qualified and ready to do the job. Very tough decision. So thank you all for being here. That's all we have tonight for our meeting, correct, Ms. Kent?
Correct.
A few things going, I'll report back to everybody through the city clerk after I meet with Ms. Williams, the city solicitor, tomorrow about the possibility of having an executive session or a special meeting. On December 17th, we have a joint meeting with the school committee. We've been, we've been included in the decision per charter to help select a new Ward Two city school representative. The only other gen, item on that joint meeting will be an update on all things COVID here in the city of Beverly from our health director, Mr. Bill Burke. So he'll have plenty to say and that, along with selecting a new school committee member, should take up the entire meeting. I want to thank everybody for tonight's meeting. It was long, but we got an awful lot done. We just heard nine new people talk about their vision for the city. So whatever happens or whatever decision we make, I hope that the other eight decide to run for office, because there are people on this council that may not run for office next year. So I wish you all the best of luck. Does anybody have anything else to add? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Some move.
Some move.
Bellman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Hausman?
Yes.
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 It wants me.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Great job, everybody.